Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Bath Charter Township Planning Commission. It's May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And the agenda is approved. Any conflicts of interest tonight? Not seeing any, so let's move on. We have two opportunities for general public comment. This is the first. If you'd like to address the planning commission, we can do so now. Seeing any, let's move on. We have the minutes from April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Are there any comments or proposed amendments to those minutes?
Move their approval.
Second.
We have support by John here. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose the same sign, and the motion carries. Miles, any communications today?
This time?
Okay. We have two items under old business. The first is our home business ordinance. And Miles would like us to act on this if we can, if we can do that tonight. So Miles, you wanna tell us where we're at?
Yeah, I still need a little bit of feedback from you guys, but yeah, we are seeking some action tonight. So just to get us where we are in the timeline of this ordinance. It's something we've talked about quite a bit. It's been in front of you guys multiple times, multiple iterations.
Yep.
You know, we find two to couple of points of it. There was some public feedback, concerns that this was creating higher barriers to entry for home businesses, or gonna cause them some kind of negative externality off of this ordinance. I'd like to reiterate that it's the opinion of the planning department that we're actually lowering the barriers to entry for home-based businesses. We're casting less of a dragnet for home-based businesses. We'll be more specific about what they are. We'll be more transparent with the community if they are a business versus a home occupation. And we're being more transparent about what the process looks like for them to get licensed. Though, which before, there isn't currently a process on the books. Just gotta add hot process, which
Yeah.
we don't think is very transparent. We also worked with township board to lower the barrier in terms of cost for this application and for this permitting process, and that's already gone through. And then finally, the planning commission wanted to send this to legal counsel, just to get a review from them. We did get that review. They, in terms of the legality and our legal authority to conduct this ordinance, they're in full support. We have full legal authority to regulate this type of business within the township, and the manner we're seeking to regulate it. They did have a couple, you know, suggestions and points. Some of those, we've changed in the language tonight, and then some of them I wanted to talk to you guys about. So this one, six here, activity carried out for gain by a resident on a property of which the resident lives. They just thought that was reiterating something that is clearly obvious. If it's a home-based business permit, they felt, of course, it's for gain. It's a business. Why would it ever be in a situation that's not for gain? So it felt like we were reiterating something. So I'm fine with that. They opted just to remove it. If we do remove it, I highlight this as well 'cause I thought you might wanna look at those, those as well. And it still says ten there. I'm gonna change to nine, but if we remove this one, how do we change to eight? So.
Why you want that, where it says four? Should we put four more?
Four or more, yeah. That'd be good.
Four or more of the ten?
Eight. Yeah, not exactly.
Not exactly four.
I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, the attorney's comment on number six, to just eliminate that.
Okay, so if we go down to whatever number out of eight, or are we still, we still like the four out of eight? Or we wanna go down to three out of eight?
Chair. Yeah, sorry.
I was gonna say, right off the get-go, I thought four was not enough. But if you take down to eight, then it's half.
I think four's a good number.
Four out of, well, half is ideal, so, yeah.
It just seemed like a minimal number for ten.
Yeah. Right.
Just a random thought, you may wanna say something on your mic about all the other ones not working, in case somebody wants to watch it.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so the comment was that we, I think we're in agreement that we're gonna remove number six, and then the comments were that we should leave the total number at eight. And so we would be, the, the trigger would be four or more out of eight. Right? Okay.
So I'm trying to remember. There, so another point of feedback that they, the council had, a lot of their feedback was related to, hey, if this is what you're trying to do, this is fine. We're just trying to confirm that you, this is what your intent is. And then my response was, that is our intent. Thank you for noticing. So they particularly wanted to point that out here, under the review and findings, how we were moving not less than fourteen days instead of five, and no more than thirty instead of fifteen. That language needs to be amended anyways, because those are unrealistic and unmanageable timelines. We would never be able to do anything for five days, no matter how hard we tried.
Right.
So we wanted to clean that up while we were in this ordinance. And then this was the intent here. Another way that we're trying to lower those barriers to entry for home-based businesses is instead of sending them two times to you guys, and then two times or three times to the Board of Trustees, this would be the first special use permit in the township where the planning commission would be able to administrate this special use permit, only for home-based businesses, no other use type. And they added recommendations about how to word that, if that was our intent, and we took those recommendations and those applied here.
Interesting. So the planning, the planning, the Planning Enabling Act is, doesn't have any language about special use permits and the two-tiered kind of review, is that right?
They leave it up to the municipality to decide. And like in Meridian Township, the planning commission does ninety percent of the special use permits. That's how most municipalities operate. Cities are similar. They do ninety percent. And then the big-ticket item stuff at large manufacturing, waste treatment plants, marijuana, those would go up to the elected body.
Right.
Now townships traditionally, if they're smaller and the planning commission's not as professionalized, they like to still give that up to the board. As Bath Township is growing and becoming more, but the way at Meridian Township and the planning commission has professionalized over the years, legal counsel feels more comfortable with the planning commission. He does. Now, what the board wants to do there, I don't know.
Right. Sounds like we're okay with that.
I also, just by the way, for the purpose of running this meeting, I don't know what's going on with these people. It's just starting out.
I think I just had one small little typo thing. Under section fifteen point two-eight, home business under A, I think you just want plural for these ventures, the last line, instead of venture.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we can open this up for comment, or?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Sure.
One, in C, we just, at one time, we talked about which zoning, if we're gonna restrict the zoning. And we talked about not allowing them in median and high density. But then I think we talked about, what if, what if, if a music teacher weren't just, something, that's not a problem in a median density, something like that, so I think we can do that in there. The other one is on C-nine, we still have level of service in there.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Now, I got one suggestion. If we wanna leave level of service in there, then just make it level of service A, which is the highest level of service and lowest traffic you can have.
Little less?
Or we can do something else. Just level of service by itself doesn't really mean anything.
Yeah. What do you think about that, level of service A?
How, how would you do it otherwise, if you didn't refer to level of service A, I guess, to, to meet the intent of that?
We would just talk to the road commission or partnering agency and say, is this consistent with the level of service for the street or road to give an opinion?
So you're referring to it anyway? I mean, if you're not explicitly putting it in the ordinance, then you're doing that anyway as you're checking in, is that what you're saying?
Well, we always rely on our partnering agencies to help us make determinations. But if we don't go with, but level of service A could be helpful, 'cause then we're just setting a standard.
Yep. No, I'm supportive of that, yeah.
And residential, residential is subjective. You're always gonna have a level of service A. Streets of white dot would be like Webster Road or Chandler Road or something like that. I can imagine they rode, Bath Township doesn't have a level of service A anyway right now. But I think we put A in there, that'll at least give us some, some threshold to start from.
Yeah. And then even if they were on a larger road, it would say, it would set a limit to how much traffic they'd be able to have, or be able to add to the order.
Right, so this is fifteen point two-eight, C-nine. Just to reiterate, then we're gonna add the level of service and refer to level of service A standard for that street or road. Okay.
And in ten, in reading that, it seems that ten is in conflict with C-three. C-three says you can have an auxiliary building up to twenty-four hundred square feet new, a new building. Ten says there can be no change in the exterior appearance of the building or premises, or other visual evidence of conduct of such home business. Well, if you put a twenty-four hundred square foot building on there, that sure doesn't look the same as the new board.
That's true. And remember, these standards came from the standards that were under the definition. But appearance of the building, we don't want them to change that. But making changes to the premises is probably inevitable, and we wanna be able to regulate regardless. So I guess, what do you think about just striking the word premises?
No, strike the word building. Oh, well, no.
Well, we don't want them to change the.
Okay, no, okay, yeah, building, yeah, right, yeah.
The building. We have, if they establish like a accessory structure, that's fine. That'd be a change to the premises.
Well, it also says other visible evidence of the conduct of such home business. So have, could, yeah, almost anything.
I guess I'm fine with that in my read of it, because even though, to your point, it is subjective, we, we don't want there to be a ton of evidence. I think that's the goal of a home business. So if they establish a polearm for the home business, and all activity is within the polearm, that's good to go. If lumberyard is now outside the polearm, well, now we're seeing other visual activity. So I think that's helpful. It gives, it gives a tool in the toolbox.
So you're saying you couldn't have a portable sawmill and dry your lumber outside and sticker it?
I would say that's something that the planning commission would wanna review. It did it in that you want that tool in your toolbox.
I wonder if you wanna just make that a little bit more flexible? I mean, the, the intent is clear, right? I mean, it's the, you don't want to, you don't want to significantly change the residential character of the district.
I, I don't, just the example you gave, John, a sawmill, to me, is not a home business, period.
Could be if he's got a portable. What if he has a portable sawmill?
That becomes a business, because then you can contract out.
Right. Ray, when you say it's not a business, what do you mean?
Well, it's not, it's not a home business. It's a business, just not a home business. It doesn't go in a residential area.
Oh, you mean it should not be allowed, is what you're saying?
Right, yeah. It's a business, yes, but it's just not, shouldn't be allowed, no, it's a home business.
What about the saying, the planning commission shall, the planning commission, through their review process, shall determine if other visual dot, dot, dot are permitted. That way, the decision just gets left up to you guys, 'cause it is subjective.
Yeah, I agree. It is very subjective, I think.
But then the subject, the nature of the subjectivity gets to be determined by.
I mean, you could, or you could choose, put language in there, you know, minimize to all extent possible, you know?
Minimize to all extent reasonably possible, the visual impact, in order to maintain the residential character.
Something like that.
The other thing, six, talking about storage, six says there should be no exterior storage of materials and equipment unless allowed by the special use permit.
So that's, well, that's what we were saying. I think we, we added that in this.
That's okay.
Yeah. Because you get to determine.
But it's not allowed, but right.
I would just think that ten should be, you know, the intent should be clear. So we have a fairly clear, it's not gonna be rock solid, but a fairly clear standard that we're trying to meet, and then enough flexibility for the planning commission to interpret that and apply it in various cases. That, that would be my preference, I guess.
So as long as it was off the road and not visual, it might be okay. 'Cause I know somebody that does have a sawmill that cuts, that mills for me. And that you wouldn't know they had a sawmill until you went to their place.
Right.
And then they had stuff. And it wasn't a mess. It was clean. It was neat and stacked and ordered.
So here's what I've got so far. So what do we, so I'm on, strike the word premise there. I'm saying, in order to protect the residential character of the district, there shall be no change in the exterior appearance of, we'll say, previously established buildings. Buildings or structures. And minimize, to the greatest extent possible, visible evidence of the conduct of such home business in order to maintain. Well, I'm on strike the order to maintain part, 'cause it's already said at the beginning of the sentence.
I think that's okay. Ray, you have some more?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Others have comments?
I have twelve on, I don't know what section this is.
It's like the same section, just below it?
Yeah, just below it, Dan.
Retail sales?
Retail sales. I know a couple that does ornaments for bonners up in Frankenbooth, and they use the whole lower level of their house to, but they don't have any onsite sales. What, what category do they fall in?
We would have to go through the, we'd have to go through what their site looks like and what their business activity is. But that might, if it was determined that they don't meet four out of the eight criteria, there might just be a home occupation. 'Cause a lot of these criteria is based upon sales on premise.
Yeah, it looks like they maybe would not, not meet the four. Sounds like it.
Yeah, 'cause this looks to me like it's designed to be in a residential area with onsite customers.
I mean, John, I have a friend that does some somewhere. They do macrame, and they take it to farmers' markets and they sell it. If by our standards, there would be a home occupation, they use one room in their house to do the macrame.
Yeah, I read twelve as say you can't bring material in from someplace else and sell it retail in your home. Not, not the other way. And selling to bond, you know, someplace like that, and putting it up retail, that's wholesale.
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
They're not, they're not selling it onsite. They're taking it somewhere else.
Yeah, I think that's unintended purpose. Like, somebody's making lawn chairs off-site, and then you're buying fifty of them, and now you're selling them out of your garage.
Oh, well, I didn't interpret it that way. Okay. Should that be cleared up? That it's retail sales onsite?
No, I'm just saying that products by the home business are clearly incidental or directly related to the home business. So you're not bringing other products up on your home business and selling them. So I.
I guess there wouldn't be any case, right, where the home business would have another location where they would produce off-site and bring it into the home?
I don't think that's what they're saying. Like, let's say.
I know they're not, but I mean, I'm just wondering, troubleshoot it, kind of.
Yeah, that, so like, here's the situation, I think. So the Slate Road business, they're selling the baked goods, right? And they're selling some art that they make at the home business. But then they have a friend who makes chairs and tables, and now that friend is like, hey, people always stop in at your house. Let me set up some of my chairs and tables on your property and sell those as well.
I understand that. I was just wondering, the, the, the home business itself, right? Is it possible that they have another site where they're making things, not at this site, but another site? Because then it would be allowed, but the spirit of it would be violated, because you'd be bringing products produced off-site. Now, to clear it up, you just might add onsite.
Yeah.
I think just put onsite retail sales, like you and John suggested, that's.
I mean, I, that's probably just never gonna happen, but that would clear it up.
That are produced onsite by the.
Yeah, exactly.
If you just put onsite retail sales, right?
Well, no, we're fine with the sales happening off-site. It's the production of goods onsite that we want.
It's the production, not the retail sales, that we want, to be onsite. Yeah.
So after production, I like onsite. Produced onsite by the home business.
Yeah, that does it.
Okay.
Where is the section of the percentage of the eight hundred square foot? I can't remember where it says.
I think that's the development standards.
Yeah, right here.
Number three, under C?
Yeah, C-three.
Just simply, if I was single and I wanted to use half my house to do it, why couldn't I?
Say that again?
If I was single and I just wanted to use half my house to make candles, why couldn't use half my house instead of just twenty-five percent of my house?
Well, because then I would.
I just wondered where that comes from.
We gotta set, well, that's what we found most commonly, looked at other languages. Again, like, there's some subjectivity to this. You gotta set standards that are good for your community. At some, at some point, you have to make a call, 'cause you're just setting some arbitrary number. But we felt like twenty-five percent maintained the majority of the land use was residential. Fifty percent now are being in a gray area. Is this even a residential property anymore? Or is it a commercial property? Fifty percent, to me, just feels like we're going too far in the direction of business.
Okay.
We want the principal land use to be residential.
They can always come and get it.
If they would like to get a variance, they can apply for it.
We've got a lot of what I consider to be rural agricultural-type land. This seems to me like we're targeting the subdivision areas more than we are, given the flexibility of somebody out in the country that's got twenty acres.
I mean, yeah, obviously, if you're in a rural area and you got twenty acres, you're gonna have more flexibility on what you can do on your property.
'Cause I know two people that live out in my area. One of them does antique car restoration, and I think it's probably a business, I don't know. And the other one repairs cars. He's not a licensed garage, but he still repairs cars as a business. I don't have any issue with it. Somebody else might.
Well, and again, we don't necessarily have an issue with either. This process is kind of meant for those people, so they can come in and get either one of two pieces of paper. Either a zoning verification letter, which I just wrote one today for a guy that's doing Kennoing, or you get a permit from this body for an S and P. And then you don't have to worry about it at night. You have peace of mind.
Well, that brings up another question I got, Miles. How do we notify these people that they do need to do this?
We'll, we'll do our part if, and when this passes, to send out some communications to people about it. But like with most things in Bath Township, we're point-based. So it, it says in the, it actually says in this process, like, either you'll seek out this ordinance on the front end. So somebody will come in, like they often do, and be like, hey, I'd like to start this business. And then we'll detail this process for them, or their neighbor happens to notice it and calls us, in which case we'll contact them and detail this process for them. And in the rural district, somebody might own twenty acres and go under the radar for five years.
Yeah, but this gives them a twelve-month period from when this is implemented.
Yeah, to get, to get licensed.
To get licensed. Otherwise, they gotta go through the whole new, right, requirements.
We're talking about home-based businesses, which to me says residential.
Not rural.
Can, can we just add one thing? When it says all zoning districts, say all residential zoning districts?
Well, then it would take out rural.
Well, we don't.
Yeah, then it would take out rural, you're right.
We, we don't have anything except residential. It says rural residential, Ray.
Yeah.
It doesn't say rural.
It says.
Just rural?
Yeah.
I thought it said rural residential.
But if you look at the zoning ordinance, it's clearly that.
The zoning ordinance said.
Well, it's clear that your residences are allowed in rural areas.
Yeah, it's one of the main land uses in that district.
Right.
That's why, to me, yeah, so it's just, that it's just called rural.
Yeah, I don't think that matters. That doesn't say rural residential.
If you wanted to exclude rural, then you should just say that.
Yes, I would agree.
Instead of saying.
I don't have any problem with excluding the rural myself.
I guess I would.
You what?
The one that we just approved, is that in rural district? It was, or no?
It was. And, and again, like, the rural district, it's a large district. And to John's point, there are many properties like that, and there's many properties that aren't. So, just for simplicity, I, I don't know how this is.
Yeah, I think we, because one just approved is in rural district, but if you drive by it, you'd say, there's a lot of homes here. That's, that's.
So should we say parcel size?
I, I, we've talked about the parcel size in the past. And I guess my hesitation to do anything with parcel size is then, you're basically saying, if you can afford large amounts of land, you're up to one standard, and everyone else is up to the other. So that's kind of like a class, that's kind of classified.
You know, when we were talking about the master plan, we had talked about the idea of trying to promote some of our home-based businesses, right, and especially in the rural areas. And so this provides some mechanism, right, for the township to know who's doing what, and then to turn that around into sort of a promoting those kinds of businesses.
Yeah, if I was in the rural district, I feel like if I was running some shop where I was fixing up cars on the side, I would ju, I would want this. I would want something saying, the township said I'm good to do this.
'Cause the barriers are pretty low, in order for it to get the recognition, right? That they're, they're allowed to do it.
Well, that's true, yeah.
So I, I don't see it as a barrier. I see it as a potential upside, maybe, even.
I guess I see it as upside.
So does this, does this ordinance stop me if I have a garage, and the garage is only for repairing cars? It's more than.
Yeah, I think you should come in and get evaluated by this process and see if you either need a zoning verification letter saying you're an occupation, or you need a special use permit. In which case, I guess I would encourage an individual to get that permit. That way, they're not looking over their back, wondering if they're ever gonna get shut down by the township.
Yeah.
I have one more question.
Yeah, George, go ahead.
Going over the packet. Did you talk to the assessor today, Miles?
Yes, I did. So George had an interesting question about taxation of this. Like, if you were to seek a home-based business special use permit, would it somehow affect you on tax-wise?
Federal taxes?
No, and, and just local property taxes.
Oh.
That's, short answer was ninety-nine percent of the time, no. The only, the only way is if the business on the home was making more than a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, or was valued at more than a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. It could, the assessor might, you know, say, well, is this a company vehicle or your personal vehicle? 'Cause now I'm trying to figure out. But most of the time, she's like, these home-based businesses aren't gonna be valued that way, so it wouldn't affect.
It's only gonna, it's gonna impact the income tax, federal income tax.
Pardon?
It's gonna, it's going to affect their federal income tax.
If they're registered with the IRS.
Not the designation, but they would be, it would affect that in any way.
Yeah.
It's gotta be our business.
It's based on their income.
Right.
When they file their income taxes, they gotta use that income in there. That's gonna impact their taxes they pay.
Right, regardless of what we do here.
Regardless.
Oh, yeah.
And it really, that's what we're saying. Really, the main things that are gonna affect our taxes are, you did a home-based business, and now you need a polearm. And that's gonna affect the property taxes, you see, on the polearm. So that nothing to do with our process here.
Right.
Right. She, she also said it's her job to kind of know what's going on, and so she, she pretty much.
Yeah, she's actively looking for this regardless of what we're, she wants to know if somebody's doing other activities on the property.
Mm-hmm. Other comments or questions? We have to hold off. We're not gonna open up the meeting quite yet. Other comments?
I got one more, Dan.
Sure.
It says, this is in section B, right down near the bottom of the page. Township superintendent, when there, there's a dispute about whether, I'm uncomfortable kicking that down the road. I think it should come back to the planning commission.
Oh, that's if the planner and the chairperson.
Yeah, when it can't be resolved between the chair of the planning commission and the township planner. It seems to me as though we, if we're gonna pass this and we're gonna make this ordinance, we should own it. And if it's not working well, then it beholds us to be the ones that modify it.
I agree, I think that's a good idea.
So you mean, if you hit four or more out of ten, automatically it just goes to the planning commission? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, I'm saying if it can't be resolved between the planner and the chairman of the planning commission, then it goes.
Yeah, so like, let's say I think it's four, you think it's three. We'd have Karen do the tiebreaker, how this is written. Yeah, so let's say I think it's four, you think it's three. We'd have Karen doing the tiebreaker, how this is written, but John saying, just send it to the planning commission, which is obviously.
Yeah.
We just got this exactly like what others.
I have no, I have no objection to that, yeah.
So, I think it's a good idea.
Makes sense to keep it in-house, I think. Anything more, John? All right, so we had a number of changes. So what is your preference, commissioners? Are you, do you wanna see these changes? I mean, they were fairly straightforward, and I think Miles, we, we got. Or we can, we can make the motion and approve this as amended.
I would make the motion to approve this as amended.
All right, we have support. Any further discussion?
So is it clear that this is a step up from what it used to be?
I think Miles is likely gonna be at the board meeting to explain all this, and I think we've explained it already, maybe to them.
Yeah, and, and I'll make sure, though, that, you know, in that little narrative part at the top, that, that we're all understanding.
Yeah, I mean, without the context, you can probably see how it might be construed as raising barriers, right?
Right.
But clearly, clearly it's not if you understand kind of where we've been. Okay, so we have a support. Ready for the mo, ready for the vote? Yeah? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same sign. Okay, and the motion carries. All right, so non-motorized plan, this is a discussion item.
Yeah, I'll keep this one pretty short. So in your packet was just a quick presentation and apology. We went a little PowerPoint-heavy with this packet. I don't know if you guys noticed, but we've been, we've been into PowerPoint lately. Trying to keep the page count down for the packet. So, short PowerPoint, and then basically what we have is some conditions for scoring the sidewalks. So if you guys remember, as a part of that joint meeting between the planning commission and the recreation committee, we were talking about the different steps in the process for the two different plans. To kind of where we're at with the non-motorized plans, we've got our sidewalk inventory, it's over there. Now we need to score sidewalks. So what we were thinking was Thursday next week, myself, Joey, Heather, we're all gonna be here at the office, and we're gonna be looking to get on the community and start scoring some of these sidewalks. We've got the community divided up into three quadrants, and we were looking to get some help doing that if anybody's interested. So we're gonna reach out to the recreation committee, too. We don't need an answer today, but we'd love to have you guys help us out. We'd love some community buy-in, and then it's not just up to us to rate it good, fair, or poor. We'll basically print out these maps, you know, more zoomed-in copies. We'll give all the different groups little packets to mark it up as they move through. You'll mark up your packet. Everyone will turn the packets back in, and then we'll digitize that information and create a layer that scores the sidewalks. And this will help with the action items section of the non-motorized plan, because we'll see the sidewalks are in the most needed repairs. And then obviously, you know, there could be a recommendation to prioritize those areas of the township.
And these are in what length chunks?
So we did this when we mapped these, and that's a good question. When we mapped these, we mapped them in twenty-foot segments. That way, when we, after the scoring, we anticipated going back and doing this, we're able, we don't have to like redraw anything. We can just mark, and we have a attribute table behind that where it gets assigned one, two, or three, one being good, three being bad. And then it would, it would, you know.
How, how do the, how does the raider then do it on the ground, I guess, if you're out there walking?
So they, well, you know, we'll give you a flip packet, and it's gonna be a closer zoomed-in view of the sidewalk sections, and you'll just try to get it as accurate as possible. It won't be exact.
You base off sections or something?
I base off sections.
Okay.
I got a couple of questions.
And we'll, we'll probably do, oh, sorry, we'll probably, you know, create that scoring layer. And to your point, Dan, if there is some variability there, just like the trails map, when we created that trails map, we then had to go out into the field and confirm said map quite a bit. So we'll do that with the sidewalks as well. We'll create a map, we'll mark it up. Let's say, like, this twenty-foot section, we mark it four, but then we drive out and we're like, oh, actually, it's twenty feet farther down. We'll adjust.
Right. George?
What time was that on Thursday? Are them images of our sidewalks?
Oh, no, they're not. These were just set. We'll do a quick fifteen-minute presentation Thursday at ten, is what we're thinking. And we'll just say, hey, this is example perfect, this is example fair, and then these would be, this is fair, this is poor.
Will there be a, I mean, this probably is likely not gonna happen with our, actually already walking them prior to this, but, a spot or a way for me to tell you, hey, it'd be nice if we had a sidewalk here while I'm out here.
So that'll be a different part in the plan. There will be a public input section where we'll have the whole township mapped out and say, where do you think it on the yard trail should be?
Thank you.
See, look at, look at four, what was that, the four one again? See, I don't look those to be four. Maybe, maybe one of the less is four. Maybe two of them look like four. Those other two are very poor.
Dangerous.
Yeah, very. I, I, I think, so we gotta, we gotta really hone down on what, if we're gonna use the criteria that Seattle had for their.
Just because of the scale and our ability to measure, we did try to keep that a little bit more so.
Yeah, I think, I like the idea of three rather than five or six categories.
Yeah, that, that's, that's fine. But I think we need to take a look at what we're gonna rate also, because stuff's gonna get in here.
Well, there's a difference.
Yeah, that's what example from Seattle. And obviously, they break it down a little bit more, but they also have like.
Some of the stuff that they've got listed in their stuff, we have like cross slopes and slopes and things like that, those don't meet ADA requirements. So we gotta, we gotta know what those are. I haven't had a chance to look that up yet, but cross slope normally on the sidewalk is no more than two percent.
Correct.
Which would be an inch and a quarter in a five-foot sidewalk.
And we do, in that attribute table, we have, you know, the sidewalk segments themselves, they're all numbered, and then whatever their rating is, one, two, three. Then we have a little area for notes, so we'll talk about that. So if you do have like a little comment, hey, this is extremely bad, this is not, you know, write down your comment as you're going through your packet to score, and then we'll add that comment to the layer.
Right.
I don't know if they have any steep, we don't have any steep streets for sidewalks in that, that was your question.
Main street?
Yeah, but you, you, I think ADA is twelve percent max.
Twelve percent grade?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's pretty steep.
But, 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 but.
Maybe touching your nose.
But if, but if you're going up a hill, there's gotta be a, no more than X number feet of twelve percent, and they got a flat section.
Oh.
For resting, so it's sort of kind of.
That makes sense.
That's why I'm surprised Seattle's got that. Seattle's got some places that are a whole lot more than twelve percent.
Right. Oh, I'm sure they do.
Yeah, we're pretty flat on our sidewalks, huh?
Yeah, so I don't, we, we all had that problem.
Okay, so yeah, if you guys would like to be there at ten o'clock Thursday, we're looking for at least three volunteers, but four would be better.
I have a question.
Yeah, Ray.
The segue to the non-motorized plan. I was contacted by a couple of trustees that asked about the survey for the non-motorized plan. The survey for the non-motorized plan, they had expressed some concern that there wasn't any direct questions about the, how do I wanna say, the importance to the community of the ParkLink Trail and Main Route Reserve Project. And that they felt that if there was a direct question on that survey, and I apologize if it just bugged.
Yeah.
That it would help the, it would help the board of trustees better gauge what the popular, popularity, if you will.
I do think the survey's finalized at this point.
I, I thought it was. I said, I'll check, and they asked if, you know, because they saw that was on the, on our agenda tonight, so. I said, I think that surveys are, you know, going to the printers.
Yeah.
Do we have, I mean, so yeah, some.
There is something on there about how important our trails are.
Yeah.
But it's rather.
I was just wondering, do we have any very specific questions like that? Other than that?
I don't think there are any specific.
I mean, you might run into the problem. I don't know what you think about doing that, but you might run into the problem of if they don't know about this, then they're just saying, forget about it, right? So, and you're not gonna be able to convey what it is, what's it about, what's the intent in a short survey.
And I, you know, I would argue that, my goodness, in that respect, in that project, and I would think that this board knows quite a bit about the importance of the project, this project to the community, just from public comment, not just from me, but there's been a lot of public comment, especially when they have an abandonment issue in January since seventeen. There were sixty people there, you know, and that was their concern.
So.
So I guess. No, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, you know, it was, I think it's been covered ad nauseam, you know?
Mm-hmm. George?
I was just gonna ask if there's anything else, why that would be called out versus something else.
Right.
Right.
Because it's the only C I P. that's been approved and forwarded and allocated funds for blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
That was one.
You said next Thursday? You talking about today for that, or?
No, next, next week Thursday.
The June first?
Yeah, next week Thursday. Okay, I was gonna say, I won't be in this.
Any other questions, comments on the non-motorized plan?
Okay.
Thanks for putting that together, Miles. I think it makes sense. Looks good.
Good job.
All right, so let's move to new business. The first item is site plan amendment for the ACE hardware development. So, Miles, I think.
Okay, I'll just give a quick intro, and then I'll kick it over to the developer. Basically, you, you guys remember, ACE Hardware came a while back. They're kind of in their build-out phase now, as they're kind of learning more about the site and looking for opportunities for future, I would call it, master planning. On this site, they've kind of looked at their surrounding businesses, and it looks like they've reached out to one and wanted to make a connection. So Monticello's is right there. Kind of the feedback I got from the township engineer, and before I skip over to the developer, I just wanna make a little, where the township engineer and Bert was, they did have some concern about traffic flow, not as it relates too much to ACE. We feel like ACE is in a good spot to take the traffic flow where they're taking it. It's the traffic flow for Monticello's, because right here is a pedestrian-heavy area going into the front. This would also be where the traffic-heavy area would be. So there's some concerns there. We feel that those concerns can be easily mitigated through a number of techniques, directional signage, speed tables, striping on the parking lots, or doing like a large white cross hatch striping, letting people know like, this area is pedestrian-heavy. You'll see down in front of a lot of Provers and Myers, although just do the whole cross hatch across the whole front edge. So just something like that, and then on the, the far end of the spectrum, you could even work with Monticello's to re-stripe their parking lot and actually change the traffic flow.
All of those things, though, I think, they address the safety issue, I think, but if people have the idea that they're gonna cut through to get to ACE, none of that stuff, even if they're following the stripes, they're following the signs, they're going over the speed bump, but if they're still cutting through, that seems to be a different problem than the safety problem. It's just congestion, or it's, you know, something else.
Uh, from my per, I guess from the planning perspective, I mean, similar to this, like, kind of the methodology in the planning field right now is get the congestion off the streets and point, basically privatize traffic flow onto these developments where the expense is on them to maintain their parking lots.
So you wanna encourage someone that's just going to ACE to use Monticello's as a cut-through?
I guess in the, in, in the planning world, there is a school of thought that says, just have them do that instead of using up our, our public roadways to get there. And that's why the connections like what we see here in the township have been looked at positively by planners.
That, that connection, though, I look at totally differently than the Monticello's.
A hundred percent. I want you guys to have a conversation about that. That's for you guys to decide. Last thing I'll point out before I keep interjecting here is our township engineer also said, hey, since you guys are talking about this, it was apparent to him that when Fast Eddie's came in, they built kind of a road to nowhere here. Monticello's could easily also link that into the site. So if we're gonna be talking about traffic flows and connections, we're gonna talk about that as well. Okay, so that's, that's our two, that's, that's two things, I guess.
Okay. All right, so we have a rep for the development here, so please introduce yourself.
Jason Burnett with Mark Crocker Development. I'm the developer for the site, partnering with the operator of ACE Hardware here. Miles, you know, explain what we're looking to do. We're looking to create better flow between the two parcels. Then there's good synergy between the two businesses. You know, somebody wants to go to the Harper's store, and then they wanna, you know, go over and get, you know, get a state from, from Monticello's or, or any grocery store. We just think it increases the synergy between businesses and the advantage to both of us. Comment to the, you know, cutting through ACE Hardware, you can currently do that through Fast Eddie's. So if you wanted to, you can go to Fast Eddie's, their driveways are connected. So if they didn't wanna go around, they could still go through Fast Eddie's and go to their driveways and connect right there. So they, they still have that avenue, you know, if they're looking at that from that perspective. But, you know, we're not looking at it as necessarily a, a cut-through to Marsh Road. We're looking at it more, because from, you know, from our site perspective, you know, it's an easy ride out, and you can come out on Marsh. But we're looking at it more as, you know, synergy between the two businesses and just looking at the two, the two businesses and listen.
That's, that's another thing I forgot to mention, too, because we thought this was kind of, kind of interesting how they would have to come in here if we did some kind of directional signage, speed table, what, you know, cross hatching. It, it'd almost create like a traffic calming mechanism, and it's, I mean, it's a busy parking lot, so it's not like you can just like swing in. It almost disincentivizes that whole cut-through. Because then, really, the only benefit is that you're directly trying to have that cross between the two. In, in terms of speed, it might, it might actually be better to use the roadway or just wanna avoid the traffic. So I, and you can make the argument either way.
So, but, I mean, otherwise, you're taking right turn, left turn, left turn, right turn.
Yeah.
Coming north on Marsh. I mean, so I, I don't know.
Right turn.
I, I think you got a lot, I think you got a group of people that wouldn't do it regardless, right? Because they know that's not the right thing to do. But I think there's probably a few people that think.
Locals will discover it and know you do it.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, okay. George?
Can you show me where it would propose to go through into Monticello's from the ACE?
I've got a proposal plan for.
Can you show, can you show me on the, it's great, on F E C D I S?
On F E C D I S.
Do you like right?
Right where that white car is.
Right where that white car is, right there.
Yeah, right where that white car is, yeah.
Seventy-seven feet from the building, I believe. They, they still wanna keep their seventy-feet or their dock doors on that north.
That makes sense.
So you wouldn't come off the Marsh Road and the North Drive, turn right and go north, and then go to the end of their parking lot and go west and straight in? You would go straight, straight across, well, you'd cut literally like miles, instead of going that way, that's the proposed way. Instead of turning right as soon as you turn right, and go along that, head north at first.
Oh, are you talking about going around?
Going around the parking lot, kind of.
No, they're not gonna do that.
No, they're not. Even, even if you straight, it's like, the end scene, even if you straight.
But if the drive was down at that.
Oh, you're talking about like trying to.
If the drive was at the north end of that parking lot and went straight across west, straight, instead of turning left right there, go straight across.
I get what you're saying, like establish a drive up here.
Yeah, because then you could go if, if they wanted to connect.
Move this drive.
No, even if they.
Leave that one.
I think the drive should be moved so it lines up with Forest View myself.
Yes.
So here's the problem.
The Monticello's drive?
Yes.
Monticello's is not gonna wanna move their drive.
I'm saying, can they go straight across?
We're not gonna, we'd take, we'd take them additional cost for no reason? Okay, so. I mean, they're not the one under development here.
Well, I understand that, but.
Okay, so.
And then, and then originally, when they, when the original planning commission, well, the original, but a long, a long time ago, when this was proposed, this whole section was proposed, they, they talked about connecting it like this is here.
Well, that's obvious. I'm seeing that.
Right, but they also wanted these to line up at one point.
Yeah, having those line up and establishing a light there could be beneficial, but here's, here, so here's a couple of things. One, moving these drives is gonna be difficult. Because we have the access management will relate to district, and we have M dot standards. That's one of the reasons why ACE had to establish their drive in connection with this, because of those two standards. They didn't have the ability to establish a drive anywhere else.
Okay.
And this drive is already on their site, so why would they not utilize it? Even if they wanted to go out, it wouldn't be permitted by ours or M dot's. So Monticello's is kind of in that same boat. If they were to build a drive here, they would have to lose the drive like we.
I just might connect Fast Eddie's to the current drive.
Well, and I think that can be talked about. I, I spoke to the Monticello's owner, and I encouraged him to come to me and see it here. Because I think. When I think that can be talked about, I, I spoke to the Monticello's owner and I encouraged him to come to me and see it here, um, because I think I thought largely most of this conversation would have to be...
Yeah.
A lot of it should, yes.
Comment?
I do. Uh, up there on Saginaw where the driveway comes in and goes to Fast Eddie's up there, what about adding the service drive coming straight down into Monticello's so you can still go in there and come straight down? And that could be here.
The Mar, Marshall.
Yeah.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
There's that.
Yeah, and, and anywhere that's not a tension, I'm sure they wouldn't wanna establish a drive, 'cause they're trying to leave that space for whatever's to come.
I mean, in principle, there's no, I don't have any problem with the idea, I like the idea. I guess, you know, if it became a problem, you just put up a concrete barrier and end it.
Mm-hmm. There you go. I mean, I would recommend putting some kind of condition in there to speak to that, I guess.
Well, I mean, I, I'm surprised that, I mean, I, I assume that Monticello's is thinking about this, um...
We, we've had conversations, like, the owners of the, of this, of the ACE Hardware and the Monticello's have been in close communication, and the Monticello's is, is very, uh, excited about doing the, the access there.
And they're aware, they're aware of the potential of increasing traffic across their lot.
Yeah, and we, we are changing kind of the, the striping a little bit on there to, you know, for, you know, for the traffic flow a little bit, and, uh, you know, we're losing a couple of parking spaces, so we've, uh, tracked it to where we can get a couple of those lost spaces back, uh, but...
So, Miles, how does this work if we are going to approve the amendment but put restrictions on Monticello's for, uh, striping? That, that seems strange to me.
Yeah, me too, see.
No, I understand what you're saying, it would be an amendment to Monticello's, approve the site plan.
I'm, I'm not sure, too, you say re-striping it, to me, to reduce the amount of easy cuts through traffic going on the north end. I'd leave it striped, I'd leave it striped the way it is. Because what you're really doing by re-striping it this way is making it easier for the cuts of traffic. They don't have, don't have to go as far north. It looks like you picked up a couple of extra parking spaces by doing that, but...
So, re-striping was just, uh, a suggestion on like, kind of the more extreme end of the, um, of a way to mitigate this. I mean, you could re-stripe it however you want. I guess this striping appears to be fine, it would make the suggestion of doing some kind of cross hatching in front of the door to indicate that like this is a sensitive area.
I'm just saying, I'm not sure the re-striping is necessary. I don't see it does anything for it, at least in my mind.
No, I get that, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
But I, I guess, if the cuts through traffic going straight, straight through, it's too much. You make the speed bump or something.
Yeah, maybe speed table, I would say.
But it depends on how you...
Yeah, that's gonna be a problem for snowplow.
Over at the East Elm Mall in, in, what is it, you ever driven behind Sam's to get the Walmart over there?
Mm-hmm.
Now, those things slow you down.
Mm-hmm.
'Cause those are, eight inches high.
Yeah, they're a real problem with your plowing snow, too.
No, I'm saying you have to do it.
They, they're not a speed table.
I'm also saying that you, that not, that isn't necessarily a great option, I just wanna think about creative ways to incentivize safe traffic flow.
So, I, I still don't understand the process here. This is a site plan amendment for ACE Hardware, but...
Well, it's...
They, the...
Again, how this, how I'm reading this application coming in is almost like a joint application between ACE Hardware and Monticello's.
But we're gonna put conditions on Monticello's, on our site plan amendment for ACE Hardware.
Again, I don't see it as a site plan amendment for ACE Hardware, I see it as a joint site plan.
That's not what our packet says, but, uh...
No, I, I get what you're saying.
But the applicant's not here, and we don't have the existing site plan for Monticello's in front of us, so how are we making an amendment, joint amendment, I guess?
Yeah, well, I mean, we have this, but I, to your point, if you, the body feels that the applicant should be here and they should supply a site plan.
I think that's...
I mean, we can put conditions that it can't happen if, unless they get the agreement for Monticello's, I guess, that these things happen, right?
Well, those should obviously, one of the obvious conditions here is to be an agreement.
But I mean, even, even for those...
One of the obvious conditions needs to be a, uh, updated, uh, site plan submitted to the planning department to keep on file for both sites.
Right.
Well, we need all the access agreement from Monticello's to ACE Hardware, giving ACE Hardware traffic access across Monticello's property.
Yeah.
I think we should be looking at the bigger picture here, there's two parcels that are north of, or, south of Monticello's that have been sa, for sale for years, that are commercial, I'm sure. And how are we gonna address the traffic flow to those at some point in time?
South of Monticello's, those are residential right now.
They're for sale.
Yes, but they're... Huh? They're commercial.
We're talking about south of Monticello's.
South of Monticello's, yeah. I said...
Yeah, on you guys' original master plan, it showed as commercial.
That's commercial.
They're for sale, they're in the de-development district, they could become commercial at any given time.
Right, correct.
They're voting for, for a commercial development.
Yeah.
The housing stock that's there right now isn't in particularly good shape.
Right, and they're not keeping it up, 'cause they wanna sell it for commercial. But at some point, we were, we should address the traffic flow to those two parcels.
Well, and again, I think that's why the township engineer's suggestion was, this could be a good opportunity for master plan, which I'm, I, again, and Jason Dale, uh, I'm sure the developer would like to, you know, move on.
Well, yeah, I'm sure he would.
But, yeah, I mean, there's potential here for good master, site master plan, I don't know what else to say.
So, I mean, I, just thinking ahead, I mean, I, I take the thought, it's a good thought, but I don't know how that would change. If we were to take that into account, how would that change the decision before us right now?
Well, you could run a, a road all the way from M seventy-eight down the property line there between Monticello's and ACE Hardware that would service those other two parcels as well.
Well, I think that, and Jason, you can speak to this more, but in kind of their original master plan, that's why you guys have kind of built this trunk line as you have, correct? Because if something ever goes down back here, you have the ability to have a, to have access.
Correct, yeah. So, the, the back part of the parcel, uh, the parking lot is the way it is because that drains the district just out of that good thing in county. So, we were trying to keep all of this within one drainage district, which is why that parking lot doesn't make the way it is. Uh, we would, I, for future, you know, expansion on that parcel, if we were putting another structure in the back, you know, we would like to, you know, that's why we put the public sewer there, we extended the water main all the way down to the edge of that parking lot there. Um, and so, you know, in theory, the two vacant parcels, they could tie into the sewer and water, uh, from that side. Uh, I do know that the two residential parcels, one of, uh, during our time with stormwater, because there's no storm outlet, we actually looked at developing those two parcels. But you have to, uh, get a, uh, basically drain, a drainage treatment for the parcel to the south of the, the sheet drain, uh, otherwise you have to somehow get storm all the way down, like, uh, the intersection, like, way down. So, uh, that's why we were, we did not proceed with those two parcels, just 'cause it's gonna be a challenge for stormwater, uh, from the stormwater perspective. Uh, but, I mean, at this point, we're just, we're looking to, you know, get approval for the, the access to Monticello's. I don't know if it's gonna involve putting in, you know, redoing the roads between Fast Eddie's and Monticello's. You know, I know Monticello's was, was excited about the cross connection, but, you know, they're not gonna spend, you know, half a million dollars putting roads and things like that, so...
Probably not.
You know, for that, if there's gonna go to that point, then there's, they already just aren't really worth it. Uh, but, you know, I understand, you know, traffic flow, uh, and, you know, the concern's there, but we're trying to, trying to increase the, the businesses.
That's, that's why I think the goal hanging through is, uh, pedestrian crosswalk signs and crosshatches.
Oh, yeah, it's common to do.
You have a question?
Couple.
George?
So, Miles, are we gonna, um, first of all, in the future, if them other two develop, we'd be able to, in the special use permit, require them to put some type of roadage or whatever for, for drive, correct?
Yeah.
And sidewalk or whatever.
And, and at that time, you could even have, again, the same conversation we're having here, which is a larger conversation, like, if they develop, you can say, hey, we would like you to reach out to this business, we'd like you to have and entertain an idea of what you could do with connection to them.
So, we could actually have two connections down the road to ACE Hardware, maybe in the future, one north of Monticello's and one south of Monticello's. On the, on the new connection, north of Monticello's where they're, where it's proposed right now, is there gonna be any drainage issues with that, uh, because the...
We, we asked that, um, so, originally, uh, based upon what the old elevations of the ACE property was, we thought there might be some drainage implications, but you guys have actually raised the elevation of the whole parcel so much that they're basically leveled right now. And so, the drain, the drain commissioner thought there'd be little effect.
Okay.
And if, if you go to different pages, it shows the total line, so you can see what that grade is right there. Uh, so where the cross connection is, it's, it's relatively flat, and then as you go south, uh, you could get, uh, a little bit, it does...
Drops off, yeah.
So, you go to those lines.
Yeah, you guys brought up a level that's like significant.
Yeah, there's five, six, seven, eight of it.
Across a wide area, though. Thank you.
Okay, well, I mean, we have the proposal, we have proposed conditions, there are just two for the new site plan amendment, right?
Yeah, we didn't know how this conversation was gonna go, so we didn't wanna propose too much, but if, I, from what I've heard tonight, I just wanna reiterate, agreement should get in place, that would be a proposed condition, and then some kind of, all we have on there right now is traffic controlling measures, yeah, traffic control measures, but that condition needs to get built up.
Can I ask one more thing?
Yep.
Is that wide enough for pedestrians to walk next to cars down through there? 'Cause I would imagine some people would walk from...
It's twenty-five feet line, isn't it?
Yep. What is it? 'Cause I imagine some people would walk from the one business to the other business.
Twenty-five feet is pretty significant, yeah. Twenty-four feet is more than adequate for two cars passing.
And a person to be walking.
Yeah, I think, is it twenty feet minimum for two cars passing?
Yeah, we've seen, we've seen drives, yeah, twenty.
Thank you.
So, Miles, you would like, uh, some proposals, ideas for that language, is that right?
Or conditions, yeah, I would like this body to go over what they think the conditions should be. We, we didn't know how all of this would go, so we didn't know what the conditions would be.
Well, so where, where are people at here?
I guess, I guess where I'm at is that the agreement, the, the access agreement committed to properties is critical. Other than that, I don't know, we need to do anything, we don't get the thing built and see how, uh, we're making better off waiting.
I would suggest some kind of traffic control measures, and, and there are many ones that could take the form of, uh, crosswalk sign.
Just a crosswalk, yeah, but as far as re-striping the parcel, I think I'd wait on that, it'll, that'd be good anyway.
I'm not, cross, that was the extreme example, if we're not, if, and I could see you make the argument that that would actually be a negative consequence, 'cause then you'd incentivize faster traffic flow. But, and Google the re-striping of the parking lot, I would say crosshatching can't hurt, twelve feet in front of the entrance.
Yep.
We gotta do our best to protect, protect pedestrians across the two there.
All right, I mean...
Dan, to your, to your point, though, um, amended site plan showing that shall be submitted to the planning department before certification of occupancy would be issued.
For Monticello's?
For Monticello's.
Cert, their cert, certification of occupancy, it depends on the site plan amendment for Monticello's?
Yes.
All right? Yeah?
So, with the plans that we have, we just need Monticello's to do that as a same draw?
I mean, I would assume that Monticello's isn't gonna do it, though, want you guys to do it for them. I don't personally care.
Well, we'll, we'll have them sign it, we'll have a cross access agreement over there.
Right, yeah. And it would just show that directional signage and cross hatching on that plan, so like a, a directional signage plan sheet.
I, I think that's, I, I'm in agreement with your suggestions, Miles.
Yeah, that's something.
I think that's fair.
Well, I think we're, we're not ready to do anything tonight.
Oh, well, it's just some discussions.
Yeah, right? So, we'll come back when you have that built out, or what do you...
What we're gonna do.
It's your preference. You could do those conditions tonight, or you could see the plan and come back.
I mean, all right, so if we're gonna do it, I, I don't have any objections doing it tonight, but I wanna be clear what exactly then we're proposing. So, what do you have if you're gonna read it back to us, kind of, as, as a condition?
So, the conditions we have right now is, obviously, we're gonna keep the one of the developers responsible to meet all American disability act requirements. Uh, traffic control measures in the form of, um, cross hatching in front of the entrance of Monticello's and, uh, crosswalk signing shall be added to the, um, submitted set of site plans. Updated site plans showing, uh, showing the directional, uh, traffic control measures shall be submitted to the planning department and approved by the department prior to C O E issue.
Of the Monticello's parking lot.
Yeah, of both, we'll just say of both sites. Okay.
What's required for that? Should they, or whatever?
Uh, all of these ones are your previously approved.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We just include those so we know we're not reiterating a condition or a special.
I mean, that seems straightforward to me, so I, I don't need to see it again if you are all comfortable with that.
I'll make a motion.
All right, you have a motion?
Exactly.
You have support, any further discussion?
If you, if you're making any conditions, we've got to, we've got to access agree with the two problems.
Yeah, that was the question.
Yeah.
Do you, nope. We need to have any landscaping issues?
No.
I saw.
We've updated the landscaping area.
And that was in the previous conditions, right?
Yeah.
All right, so all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Right, the motion carries. Thanks for coming.
I have one question for you at this stage.
Sure.
Who, who made that motion?
Somebody asked me that. Of the thirty-five thousand square foot building.
Uh, rated, yeah.
How much of it is going to be ACE Hardware?
So, it's, it's all gonna be the same operator, so Midwest Power equipment, um, they have a three million hundred thousand dollar, um, right now, they'll, one time open.
Yeah, they're all, all, all...
Yeah, they're on top of the series. Um, so, the ACE showroom's gonna be roughly around seventeen thousand five hundred square feet, but it's gonna be combined with Midwest Power showroom, so like, where Midwest Power has all of their lawn equipment, their lawn mower stuff, like, uh, and the showroom, for sale now, that'll be part of the ACE showroom. So, it'd be kind of one showroom, in the back, seventeen thousand five hundred's gonna be their shop area, the warehouse area, uh, where they service all these companies.
Thank you.
Midwest Powers is booed from where they are now to here?
Yes.
Yes. Um, you know, when you tell people you're a planning commissioner, or they know you are, or they ask you questions, you're, you're supposed to know all this, you know? So, that was, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. All right, so let's move on, the second item under our business is the sidewalk ordinance, and we've got a small presentation here.
So, um, Joey, you want to go ahead and share? So, I'll just kick this off of how this came to you guys, and I'm gonna kick it over to Joey to give a short presentation. So, if you guys weren't aware, if we were at that board meeting on Monday night, and catch the board meeting, uh, the board would like this body and the planning, so the planning division, to, uh, do a review of our current sidewalk ordinance on the books, and look for, uh, just assessment of what we have and how that ordinance can create better clarity and, uh, modernize the ordinance. I think this current language comes from the mid-nineties, so it's been a while, there has been some case law updates, so we're kinda gonna give it the first review as the planning division, and then this will likely go to legal for a review for them, and then move its way back to the board for updates. So, I'm gonna give you a short presentation of what we're working with right now and what we're kinda thinking in terms of the planning.
All right, so, in this, uh, presentation, gonna go over, um, what our current ordinance looks like, all the mentions of sidewalks and everyone else, and also some research topics that I look at under the news company are doing, so. Looking at our current ordinance, uh, the big section is called sidewalk construction, repair, and maintenance, um, so we're just gonna get right into it. Uh, the definitions of that is these, uh, seven, right there. We might wanna discuss if we wanna add some more to build that out, or maybe take some looks away from the specific section. I got the full ordinance pulled up in this other tab here, we did a lot of look at it every time.
We, we wanted to quickly go through this presentation and then we can have a discussion about what we were thinking, what you guys were thinking as well.
Sure, so the purpose of the ordinance right now is just to provide construction, maintenance, repair of sidewalks for public safety, so it says. It mentions that, uh, sidewalks and subdivisions after January first, nineteen ninety-seven, uh, can be installed by the township board as they require it, and they shall be installed within one year of construction or alteration of stability. So, that's another of the ordinance. It talks about obstructions and repairs of sidewalks, says lot owners shall keep the sidewalks adjacent to their lots in good repair and avoiding the destruct, or obstructions. They shall be repaired or replaced when the condition is detrimental to public safety, and we'll go over some, uh, what the ordinance describes that in the next slide. Township board, after coming to this, uh, determination, will have, um, a, a public hearing, and then they will mail the lot owner to prepare, remove the obstructions. This notice shall specify a time period that the work shall occur, and that time period cannot be graded at nine days. These are what we have on the books right now, that, uh, class, but qualifies aside... These are what we have on the books right now, that, uh, classifies a sidewalk to be repaired or replaced. It really just talks about differences in the level of the sidewalk and cracks in the sidewalk, if there's anything major like that, as you can see on the right. Take a lot of what Miles kinda showed before, those images also sums up basically the same meaning of what a poor sidewalk would be, is what we have on the books right now, for conditions to repair and replacement. So if a property owner does not construct or repair sidewalk when the board has determined to be so, wouldn't plan a commission, because this can also happen. The board may construct or repair it at any time after the time frame, and it will be paid out of the township contingent fund, and the board may pursue the means necessary to recover the cost from the owner, this is typically in the form of like, um, assessment, I believe, so. Also goes into the construction standards of sidewalks, and I'm not gonna, you know, go into all the details of those, but I linked that there, there's quite a hefty amount of information regarding that. Here's some other sections within that, um, construction, maintenance, repair section of the ordinance, it discusses that the township board or the designated official is responsible for providing for and supervising construction, maintenance, repair of sidewalks. And, uh, again, if you know the violation, shall be sent to mail, have a specific time period, and it shall not some nine days to compliance. And then just some other various legal language there at the end of that ordinance. And then we're gonna look at a couple other occurrences that sidewalks are talked about in the ordinance, not that repairs, maintenance section. So the planning commission may require sidewalks for any projects if deemed appropriate by a landscaping ordinance, it says that, it's kinda interesting, I find, that's in there. In section two of our landscaping ordinance, it discusses some exemptions for that, which I believe are rural and single-family homes and things of that nature. I think it more just applies with multifamily commercial development. It also says that the planning commission or township board can require sidewalks if deemed necessary, um, I think that's a little repetitive when it comes to this and that subdivisions versus that. I think it's just trying to say if it's a subdivision, it can still be even necessary for single-family homes, basically. If they're not required, then a sufficient rightway has to be divided so that in the future they may be installed. And then sidewalks not designated as pathways shall be at least five feet wide. If a subdivision is located within a proposed non-mortarized pathway, the planning commission or board may require construction of sidewalks as well. Provide access to private and public facilities like schools and parts of commercial centers, so. Lastly, our current, current ordinance, we have a couple miscellaneous things, um, we have something that talks about projecting signs have to have clearance of nine feet over the sidewalk. We have something defining what the tree lawn is, which is basically the area between, um, the edge of the public rightway, right where the street is, and then the edge of the sidewalk. That's where the tree lawn is, where you have street trees located, um, and then it discusses street trees within that tree lawn being at four feet from each other. That's what our current, current ordinance says about sidewalks. Other communities I wanted to look at specifically, um, to go back to the start presentation. I wanted to look at administration of sidewalk improvements, so basically who's responsible for writing all of this, the responsibilities of the adjacent property owner, and how they deal with violations of ordinance and compliance.
And just to jump in here real quick, the reason that we're calling those out is 'cause that's where the board is most concerned here. Where are the bad sidewalks, what's the process to get them fixed, what's the impact on the residents?
So, uh, just briefly researched some of this and found some stuff from Meridian, City of East Lansing. Meridian, the director of public works engineering, supervises construction, maintenance of sidewalks, um, and likewise, their adjacent property owners must maintain them. They had a little more language regarding, um, snow removal and such, and they discussed public hearings being called for, um, noticing violations and requiring work to be met. Something interesting I thought they did was that, um, if the property owner does not complete construction for required sidewalks, that they'll be assessed, and may be paid back over a five-year period, so I thought that was quite interesting to give property owners an option there. And the City of East Lansing, the city engineer supervises construction, repairs to all sidewalks, um, adjacent property owners must build them, keep them in good condition, construction. They, something interesting they did was they had all obstructions such as snow, rubbish, um, cars, anything along those lines under the same ordinance section. It was mu- I think better for organization than we did. And then similarly, public hearing is called when, you know, the responsible party has determined construction to the sidewalks is necessary, and the city can assess the property if they're done. Yeah, that's it.
So, just some high-level takeaways from here real quick before we kick it back, um, we think there's a lot of opportunity for clearing here. We think there's a big opportunity to clean some of this up, um, just a cou- yeah, sure, just a couple of things from this presentation, um. So these definitions, they're, they define them more building, they define it differently than how we define building in the zoning ordinance, so that can create conflicts, that can create legal avenues for recourse. So I would just strike that definition from this here, I don't know why we're defining building in the sidewalk section. We probably add some definitions in here, um, such as obstruction, probably define that. Some different words that we would expect to come up if we're ever in a lawsuit with somebody, we wanna define those terms, that way when we're in said lawsuit, we'd have better standing. For the purpose, this is like the only section that planners ever get to be creative when we write, um, and they wrote a total of like, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten words. So that, that is the entire, that's the entire section.
Okay.
So I would say we should build out that more, uh, just to convey, and also it's helpful to convey to the public, like, why do we even have a sidewalk section? Well, because those active forms of transportation are important too, not everyone wants to be in a car twenty-four seven. Kids, kids exist, children exist, um, so then, uh, subdivision, language needs to be cleaned up, uh, there's a lot of language here, um. This was the most built-out section, I actually liked this section quite a bit, um, we even looked at the section the other day when we were talking to somebody about the sidewalk stuff. Uh, this section needs to be cleaned up quite a bit, one thing that we, kind of these other sections, one thing we didn't like too is they ke- kept saying the designated official, but every other municipality we looked at named that person, it was either the township engineer or the code enforcement officer. This is typical of smaller communities, uh, this was, this was probably typical of Bath, like, in the mid-nineties. They didn't know who was gonna be doing that role, 'cause there was like twelve people that worked here, so it was like anybody, you know? But it's better and it's clear to staff and the public when you just call out who that person is with the responsibility, so we would suggest to go through that ordinance and just be specific about it. Just say what we want to do.
Are you saying that, excuse me, are you saying to strike that designated individual?
Uh, yeah, we'd just remove designated individual, and I would say, who is designated, is, is it supposed to be the code enforcement officer, should it be the township engineer? Whoever we determine that individual should be the planner, whoever we determine that individual's to be, we should just say that's who it is, just so they know too. Because another problem with government bodies is there's a turnover, that person leaves, a new person comes on, no one tells them they're supposed to be managing the sidewalks, so they never do it.
Right.
And then two years in, they find it in the ordinance, and they're like, my god, that was my responsibility.
Yeah, that can happen.
Could be in the job description if that's the case.
Miles, in the other communities that you looked at, is the idea of an appearance ticket, is that there?
Um, in, in terms of enforcement, uh,
This is, this is for the-
That was a lot.
This is for the hearing, right?
Yeah, that's a little odd, appearance to the hearing, there's, they don't need to be up to hearing.
Right, and what, what is an appearance ticket, is that a fine?
It's an apparent, I, I don't know, we'd have to build out that section a little bit, I guess I took that as either a ticket to appear to the public hearing or appearance to hear in court, but I don't think we should be going straight to court, there should be a process.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't-
I think it means straight to court.
Okay.
But this is after the public hearing?
Yeah, the public hearing takes place, they don't do their part, we issue a civil citation, and, and, but this is saying, straight to court. I would issue a fix-it ticket first, and then create a process for enforcement from there.
Yeah.
So, again, should be built out. We did like, I, I did think to Joey's point, how Meridian Township did the, to get into a little about how it affects the public. So here, I guess here's kind of the corruption, where the board's likely at with these. So the reality is, we have an ordinance on the books where the property owner is responsible for maintaining their section of sidewalk. That's common in most communities, I would say. The reality is Bath hasn't always had the ability to do that type of enforcement, and there's also been, uh, not a ton of willingness to do that type of enforcement, 'cause not, the areas where some of these sidewalks are, aren't the most prosperous areas in the township, and you're gonna be coming to a property owner or a single-family homeowner, and they're gonna say, I need you to fix this twenty-five-foot sec- section of sidewalk on your property, and they're like, well, how much is that gonna be? And you're gonna be like, uh, it's gonna be about five thousand, six thousand dollars, and they're gonna say, well, I'm gonna lose my home. And so what, you know, kinda, that's a tough spot for the board to be in, politically. So there's been some, uh, talk at the board level of, and Brian talked about it here as well, of doing like a clean slate program, where having safe routes to school come in, and they're gonna be, uh, fixing up some of the worst areas in the township. You could use a small amount of ARPA funds to fix the rest of the wall hanging fruit, and then most of the sidewalks, I would say, in the township, seventy percent of them are pretty new, because they're all in newer subdivisions and the newer apartment complexes. And so then you create a clean slate program, you notice it, and then you enforce the ordinance. We did, going back to the Meridian point, like the idea of assessing it over a period of time, 'cause then if it's six thousand dollars, okay, that assessment of one year might kill some people, but spread over five years, it might be more manageable, so we kind of like that.
Mm-hmm.
And it's basically like an kind loan to the property owner on behalf of the municipality, in the long run, we recoup our costs. If we don't recoup our costs and they fail to do so, then we go down the path of enforcement for taxation like we always do.
Well, the assessment's actually put on the tax over at the front.
Yeah, put on the tax.
It's built with its property tax.
Yep, yep. And so it's kind of a clean process too, it's a process built into something that already exists, and it makes it less of a burden on the owner. You've talked about how there's been other, uh, there is a million mechanisms on how to do this, so where are you guys' thoughts, those are our thoughts, I guess.
The one thing, most of what Dr. here is, is kinda saying, if there's a violation, we're gonna do something. The way Meridian Township does it, they take a more proactive stance, they inspect the section of the township every year, and they actually award a contract for that work with a contractor. The property owner has, like, sixty days to do it themselves if they'd want to, if they don't do it, then it just becomes part of the township contract, and it gets done that way. If it's done as part of, part of the township contract, then the property owner has a choice, they get paid cash rate in front, but they can have it added to, added to the taxes. And I think there's a, there's a certain amount, if it's less than a certain amount, you've gotta pay it the first year, if it's more than that, then you can have a spread number of years.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a thing that way. To administer that, it takes a little more, you have a lot of townships apart, because you gotta, you gotta do the public hearing, you gotta, you gotta put the contract together and stuff like that, so if the engineer, I would say, would probably do most of that stuff.
Yeah, and then how is that paid, I, I guess, one, these are the types of things we're looking to build out, some kind of process detailed in the ordinance itself, to be clear, to not only staff, but the public about how this goes. And then two, if it is a township engineer that measures this, which it could make sense for them to do, I don't know, um, it might make more sense for the planning department to do it, or code enforcement to do it, just because our engineer's not in-house here.
To do what, and specifically, what are you referring to?
To monitor the sidewalks in the township.
Okay.
We don't have, I, I think we have a small enough amount of sidewalks in the township where we wouldn't have to do what Meridian does and like go by quadrants one a year, we could just evaluate it once a year.
And once you get it up, if you're gonna start from scratch, you know, get this program and get it all up to the same, some good level, you're not gonna have to do anything for a few years.
I agree, I agree with Ray though, I think that's a, you, you need to have that sort of process built into of inspection, right?
Yeah, a hundred percent, I would say something like, uh, let's just say with the code enforcement officer, uh, in March of every year shall conduct an inspection of the township sidewalks. Any sidewalks found to be in disrepair shall go through X process to be evaluated, the public hearing will be held on X date.
I also like the idea though too, that, you know, basically getting, getting someone to do it, right, lining it up, getting a quote, and then it's, that, that would be relatively painless for a property owner, right? To say, do they send them a, an estimate for what their share of that would be, yeah?
Yep.
And they can choose to do it themselves or not?
When they, when they mark the sidewalks, they actually do the program, they ask the board, and they mark the section of the sidewalk that has to be replaced. So based on square footage estimate, they send every property owner what it's gonna cost.
I mean, that, that seems like another sort of way to make the whole thing easier, right? Rather than saying, your sidewalk's out of compliance, fix it, not, not getting them in the estimate, not getting them, you know, anything more than just you gotta fix it, and they say, I'm not gonna fix it, and then we're sort of kicked over to us, I kinda like the idea, 'cause I think, I don't know what happens in Meridian actually, but I, I would guess few actually choose to do it themselves, they just-
Very, very few.
Yeah. That makes sense, yeah.
Again, another segue to sidewalks, but I don't totally understand, um, how these, quote, modern or recently built subdivisions, some of them don't have sidewalks. I was under the impression that whenever we grant-
Used to be.
Yeah, but, but I noticed that, uh, I can't, I think it's a street that these two people live on, um, doesn't have any sidewalks.
That's not a subdivision.
Excuse me?
That's not a subdivision.
What is?
Site condo.
Yeah.
So I think, so I think if you wanna have site condos, come under the subdivision, because we're gonna change our ordinance.
Yeah, I agree with that, 'cause I think my, my subdivision is actually a site condo.
Well, I, I, you know, and I, I thought those were private, you know, single-family dwellings.
They are, most of them are.
And I've wondered, what's wrong with this picture, why don't these single-family units have sidewalks on them?
You're talking about where, where we live, those are all, well, where we live, they're all single-family homes on those two streets.
Okay.
But it's a site condo, it's, it's built under a site condo, because that's per, from my understanding, from a developer standpoint, that's a lot less headache to do a site condo than it is to do a subdivision.
Why, I don't know. I guess, you know, this is my, my silly logic, and I've only been here just slightly more than a year, so that's why I'm having trouble understanding, but a condo is basically just a compact, single-family dwelling combined with another single-family dwelling.
Well, except they're combined.
So, so where's the difference in that?
There's, just from my perspective, there are a number of state laws, state laws that come in, that they get treated very good.
Well, I, I, I mean, it's just, it's kinda crazy, when you have condos right here, and right here you have single-family dwellings, and all of these single-family dwellings, like the one you were just talking about, the one that had the demo problem and all of that, the burnt house, I noticed they just put new sidewalks right in front of that, and yet you go down one street and there are no sidewalks.
Well, it's confusing in your neighborhood in particular, I mean, there's five different HOAs operating.
Well, and what's, what's the purpose of the sidewalk, I mean, you'll see a sidewalk going to nowhere on both ends, what's the point?
I would agree that any resident, we should, the planning commission should have the discretion to mandate a sidewalk in any residential area.
That's, I agree.
And the sidewalk has nothing to do, normally in these developments, the sidewalk isn't built until the home is built on that property. In other words, the developer doesn't build all the sidewalks when he, when he builds the street.
Right.
He just, he just builds the street, sidewalks get built as the homes are built.
Correct, it's part of the homeowner's, uh, mortgage, if you will.
Yeah.
But I, I, I just, I just didn't understand the, the lack of continuity in that, I mean, you know, you don't understand what I'm saying. I, I think that in, in order to have a, the word that Dan uses quite often is harmony, and harmonious, I, I, it's just, it's really, really chaotic. And, and, you know, to see a house here with mandatory sidewalk in front of it, and then a condo here with no sidewalk.
Yeah.
So you have to walk in the road, which is dangerous.
The only other thing that differed a little bit is the time to, to, for action, basically, right? So it varied from twenty days to East Lansing, and Bath was ninety days, and Meridian Township was sixty days, I think.
You're talking about the removal of stuff?
No, I think just the repair, after they have- No, I think just the repair after they have.
Yeah. It's a little arbitrary, I guess, I mean, I always put a different.
I mean, I, I don't know that I have any big revelations as to what it should be.
If you start the work on a sidewalk and it takes you even twenty-four days to get it done, I guess.
If you're gonna do it yourself though, I mean, they need a little time to, you know, get bids and do all that. Sixty, twenty days seems very short to me.
Yeah.
I would say sixty to ninety seems more reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good, that's good. And, and what happens when, like, with this COVID, you know, pandemic related, uh, what do you call it, supply line problems? Um, look at the Trader Joe's. I mean, they just shut down. They're gonna have to re, reapply for a construction permit.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what if, what if the private homeowner decides to want to do it themselves? Goes out and gets bids and the contractor says, that's why I came into your house in many days, you know, or something like that. What, what remedy is?
Could we, we should build, that's a good point. We should build something in like, uh, failure, um, if you fail to meet the timeline, good reasoning shall be provided to the township or, or, you know, whoever administration staff is in charge of this. If good reasoning is not, not, uh, provided within the timeframe allotted, then enforcement actions may be.
What we might do is just say, give them an option for extension of time, if they want to apply that extension of time.
And they can have an extension if the contract is in place or something, right?
If the contract's in place, it might even just be viewed as the project being executed.
And the execution.
Well, I wouldn't want the contract to be the thing that is dated though, right? Because I mean, you could have a contract for doing it two years from now or something, right? So you get an extension if there is a contract to have it implemented within such a time.
I think that's a current ordinance says you have to start construction within that ninety days.
That, that's what I would.
Start construction?
I believe that's what it says.
The, the term starting, start construction, it's in the verbiage.
I mean, that's how, that's how like a lot of our, if you're issued a special use permit, you have to implement construction within a year. It doesn't say it's to be finished within a year.
Right.
That's not law school language and, uh, Joey's looking forward.
But the sidewalk, you wanna keep it a lot shorter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I wouldn't think.
I'm just saying that that most, I think the ordinance usually defaults to implementing within a timeline, not concluding.
Although both of these are completing the work.
The notice shall specify the time period within, uh, which such work shall be commenced.
Like there is it.
Yeah.
We don't say it's completed.
Whenever township board designated, shall determine that a sidewalk is in repair or disconstructed.
I think that last sentence though pretty much is completed within ninety days.
Yeah, it says.
Executed.
Okay.
So in our.
Might not always be possible.
Yep.
So the notice doesn't say, the notice will say, when you gotta start.
You have ninety days. But we would include that in the notice, obviously. Well, there should be some language in there to build out some kind of like deviating from the timeline.
Yeah, with good reason, yeah.
In our code enforcement, we have some, some type of language for that also.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you could maybe look to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So any other thoughts, I guess, about, I'm not trying to.
Well, just, in, in one place, it talks about, uh, anyway, the joints in the sidewalk shall be either socked out three and a half inches deep or.
Yeah, it's under the construction standards.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's under this, probably under the construction standards.
They just can't have sawed, sawed.
That, that's, that's, that's my recommendation. They can, they can have sawed.
Ah, okay.
Because.
The construction standards were actually the section we liked the most, and they are the most, something like. They're most built out.
The tool joints work sort of, but the, that one goes down a little bit like this.
Right.
The problem with the tool joints are, with number of skateboards and stuff we've got.
They don't work.
Well, yeah, and if you sock on it, you don't feel the joints.
Right.
If you get tool joints, you have to pump every five feet.
We'll compare our construction standards to other municipalities' laws and go through this. We gotta know how to give a high overview of what we're looking at, and for ideas from you guys, would you add, provide us some good guidance?
Yeah, I like the way this is going.
And the, the board just tasked us with this, like, today.
Yeah.
So we're so far.
Yeah.
But they, they did want to expedite a timeline on this, it seemed like, so that's what we're trying to look like.
Yeah. Any other final comments here before we move on?
No, that was well put together. I'm very impressed with that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd, I'd still like to explore the idea of a sidewalk, uh, well, I don't care what you wanna call it, but like we do for street lighting, where you just pay so much a year, and there's a fund.
There's a district.
Yeah, a district, and they plow the snow and they maintain the sidewalks and, because you see a lot of places where the sidewalk is not plowed consistently because in some cases, it's the municipality that's not plowing the snow, uh, quite often. Or the homeowners on vacation or went.
Florida.
Went to Florida or something. And if people want this option, I think it should be made available to them. I don't think it should be forced on them, but I think it should be presented to them.
What do you think about this? Because we talked a little bit about the district option, not to open this back, you know. But, so, the district option, similar to lighting, the thing about, maybe, I guess lighting's the same, but everywhere in the township under lighting districts, some portion of that is covered. With the sidewalks, if we put people into, let's say, so all the folks in Park Lake, they get put into a, a Park Lake sidewalk district.
They'd have to.
Way more than people in the district use the sidewalks. They're basically subsidizing everyone else's activity. So that was kind of our thought there. That was a perceived issue with doing it that way.
I mean, building out your sidewalk in front of your property, you're subsidizing use just the same way, right?
Sure.
Yep. Well, maybe.
If you made the districts larger enough, maybe it helps, uh.
To offset those, yeah. I mean, it's kind of like a, yeah, it's like a risk pool or insurance pool kind of, right? So you would think it would lower costs.
Maybe that.
If you distribute those costs pretty broadly.
Said it like that, I guess, yeah, that is.
So even if I didn't have a sidewalk in front of my house, I was in the district, I'd be paying for that sidewalk.
It'd also help people not fight the sidewalk so much because owners know that, you know, how this works. And so then when the township's even entertaining the idea of a sidewalk, they're like open arms because they're like, I don't wanna deal with this.
Well, I wouldn't have any problem with a township for, uh, funding a portion of the expense for public good. We do this with drains all the time. We do it with roads.
But you can't, you can't opt in or out of it though.
No, but if the, if they just vote to establish a district, just like you do for a drain, you vote to establish a drainage district.
You leave it up to a specific neighborhood to establish the district?
I would think so, yeah.
Well, the lighting districts are, for example, are, um, established by the township assessor. And then obviously those go to the board to be, you know, she recommends them and they go to the board.
Right.
She's well told to do that work, but she understands.
I mean, I guess, I, I, the idea, I think, is a good idea. I just, I don't know, given the size of our township, do we have the capacity to do something like that? Suppose we do. I guess it's just.
Well, at some point, Dan, we're gonna have to plow the snow on the sidewalks and maintain the sidewalks that are on township property, and there's quite a bit of them along Main Street.
But, I think, I mean, you might be, I don't know, that, I would start with the plowing to include in that district? I mean.
Well, I would too.
I mean, I don't know if I would though. I mean, that sounds like, that sounds like a whole level of added cost to the township, right? I mean, that, that sounds like a really expensive endeavor that you're gonna plow everyone's sidewalks every time it snows. I, I can.
So that's not how most communities.
Right. I mean, it's just repair and replacement, right?
Most communities will have, um, have you clean up your own sidewalk.
Yeah.
To John's point, there are some properties that we would have to do downtown because there are properties.
Yeah, oh, sure. That makes sense. I, I think, thinking about just the repair and maintenance, right, uh, as a district, I think it's something we could consider. And if you wanna give the board options.
Yeah.
We could give them that option, that this is sort of the deluxe version, maybe not, that's not the right language maybe, but. And maybe if we could figure out some estimates for what that would do to defray costs to individual property owners, right? And, and I think John's right that, you know, we have to consider sidewalks as public goods to some extent, right? And so it makes sense to share those costs.
Share the costs, yeah.
I like this clean slate program.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I, I like the clean slate program too. I think it makes it more political and viable.
Yeah.
For the.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah. I would do whatever, whatever option you go with. The districts, uh, just the property owners maintaining it, I would say, doing a clean slate program, noticing that the ordinance is being updated, noticing the ordinance is going to be enforced to the T from here on forward. And then implementing some kind of mechanism to enforce it.
That'll be costly in itself.
The clean slate program.
No, just to enforce, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Anytime you make a rule, you gotta.
That's right.
You know, no fishing at the beach, but I see people fishing at the beach, I mean, of course, you know what I mean?
Dogs, no dogs at the beach.
All right, any final comments?
We see lots of those.
Okay, uh, this is a good discussion. Thanks. All right, so let's go to the last item under new business is the commercial clear cutting ordinance.
Okay, I'll be quick with this ordinance, um, for this presentation. So, clear cutting. We, uh, basically, we wanted to lay out again some more format, what we got on the books currently as it relates to just trees, I guess, in the township. So we have, uh, some street tree language, we have some in the landscaping ordinance, uh, you'll see them red here. Um, this has kind of been a bone of mine, I guess, since I've got here, this seventy-five percent native species requirement, um, which probably can be determined because you could just look up what species are invasive, native which are invasive, as site plans come in, um, and determine if they're, uh, meeting that requirement. I've never liked the approved street tree list, and I know you guys talked about this one like at length, but there was kind of a huge, as I see it, problem with how that ordinance was inevitably implemented into, when, when it was codified. So, you referenced the street tree list, approved street tree list. But the approved street tree list, and I, I don't know if you guys remember me talking to former trustee Al Morigi about this. He had a problem with the street trees when we got to the board level for the, uh, Park Lake home apartments.
Yeah.
And he's like, some of these are on the approved street tree list, and I, that's when I looked into this. The approved street tree list is a document held internally within the planning department, not in the codified ordinance.
That's correct.
Therefore, I felt like it wasn't legally enforceable. So, just a little side note there, yes.
Um, so, I mean, that sounds like an easy fix though.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think.
No, an easy fix.
It is, it could be easily fixed, yes.
The street tree list, I think, we should talk to the county road commission about that too. Because I know in Inham County, they have an approved street tree list for all county roads.
Mm-hmm.
Just the street trees itself.
Yep, and the road commission has, uh, I don't, I don't know if it's approved list, but they have a list of recommended trees.
Right.
Yeah, there you go.
Um, okay, so that's basically what we got in terms of trees, right? And so there's been this conversation about clear cutting, and it's been brought to my attention several times that you guys are concerned about that, so that's why I was coming tonight. It was on our work, um, our workload for the year, so this is kind of a first step. So, so what are other communities? So, uh, this community basically takes a more direct approach of the three I'm gonna talk about tonight. They do a bare bones, clear cutting ordinance. They do it through a zoning mechanism where they set a district within the zoning ordinance, and this is a protected tree district. And then you're not allowed to clear cut within that district by these, uh, general provisions that they set. So that's kind of the most clear cut one. Yeah, no, no pun intended, I guess, um. So, then we have, uh, the city of Charlotte, um, this is a more well-rounded tree ordinance. This was something like, uh, twenty or thirty pages long. They do a deep dive into trees throughout the municipality, and clear cutting is an aspect of that tree ordinance. So those are kind of the two ends of the spectrum, right, from like just purely identifying clear cutting as an issue and coming up with a zoning fix for it. This goes the regulatory side, so this is a regulatory ordinance. And they have about twenty or thirty pages of regulations around trees throughout the municipality. And they set up a whole licensing procedure. The third ordinance we have is from Canton Township, um, and we are kind of familiar with the language of this township. We've looked at some of their language before, so that's why we kind of like this one. And it was a good kind of middle of the road option between the last two that I just specified. This is a regulatory ordinance, um. What they do here is they basically set up a section of the township where they were looking to preserve trees. And then they set up a permitting process, uh, if you would like to remove trees. So let's take that house in your neighborhood, for example, in, in Hoplough. They would apply for a permit to remove those trees. Uh, the permit can be granted, it can be denied, it can be granted with conditions, right? So you could say, you're only, we're granting your permit, but only forty percent of those trees shall be removed. Um, if, to put some teeth into the ordinance, if, uh, trees are removed without a permit, there are fines and fees that will be levied against the developer. I don't think you can really, you need to think about the practicality of these ordinances. Just putting something in writing doesn't matter at all if you don't have some way to get recourse. So I, I guess I would recommend whatever option you go, you have some way to, uh, if you wanted to do this, you need to have some way to find.
Are you speaking like civil infraction or?
Yeah.
Personally, the Canton Township ordinance, I like that one the best. Uh, you know, with our rural, rural arena that we're trying to convey and.
So is the Canton one, so the language is a little bit, um, I like it too, but uh, for a big development, right? Someone's coming in for a permit and they're marking each of the trees that are meeting the threshold or not meeting the threshold, and asking for a permit to cut down those, I mean, how exactly does it work?
We wanna build that out, but I would say, you know, you don't have to mark each of the trees, um, you could ju, if you were doing like a larger development, like in Ace. I mean, they had to clear that entire property.
Exactly, right.
You would just write something up and say, these are the identified species on the property. If we did have some kind of list where we'd say like, these species of trees need to be preserved, which I don't know if we'll get that granular with it, um, you know, those would have to go through a special vetting process. I don't know if we have the ability to enforce that or get that granular. I would say we probably don't. But you, they would just say, we're looking to clear cut ninety percent of the site. Do we have a clear cut for that?
I mean, in that case, it's like, yeah, so there's the difficulty of saying, you know, you can't go tree by tree, and we're not gonna approve this tree, yes, that tree, no, kind of thing, right? So it makes sense what you're doing.
You can do that.
Right.
Some municipalities do do that.
Yeah, that seems like tough.
We have the ability to do that.
But in the case that you're talking about though, even if you're saying like ninety percent, okay, fine.
So here's.
They're gonna take trees probably that we would not like them to take, right? Even in that ninety percent that they're big or something, so it doesn't quite lean in the right direction.
If we get that granular, like what I would imagine Meridian does, if there was like trees on a list they wanna save, they probably send somebody out to the site, like a harbors out to the site, um, fire, and they probably tag, like, with blue spray paint or whatever, tag said trees, don't remove these.
As, as an example, the new fire station on Oakless Road in Meridian Township. When that was, when that was built.
Yes, I remember.
They had, they had to have their site plan done, maybe that was a township project. The site plan was done, and then you went out and located all the trees on the site plan. Did you tell which trees could be removed and which one had to be saved? That was part of that process, right?
That was because the, the original owner of that property was a harbors. He had planned it, it's really unique trees all around that property.
George? But, but, but the footprint of the building determined, these trees have to go just to build the building.
Right.
Now outside of the footprint, what can we save and what trees are just, just.
And, and just before we go on, that could be a condition of the permit. So like I said, approved tonight, approved with conditions. So the condition might be, um, only the trees that are acquired for the building itself can be removed. Um, however, nothing on site can be removed until zoning approval has been granted.
Right.
George?
So I, I got a couple of issues. I'm, I'm just trying, so I'm trying to, I'm gonna pose things maybe in a offensive way, but I'm trying to get feedback so I understand the reasoning behind it. So, when you were talking, I was trying to understand, so if they pick this tree and this tree, how am I gonna build my building? Until you said outside the site plan. But then I was thinking, so a lot of the trees, and I know a few places where they're, where it's, you know, older growth. But most of the growth we have right now is not old growth. And then, so how do we determine, okay, let's say you have a parcel and you wanna build on it. What right do I have to tell you what you can do with your trees? That's what I'm trying to understand. And then, so let's say I have a site that's completely bare and I fill it full of trees. What's the difference? I'm still changing the ecology of, or the.
Can I say something real quick to that? Just so you know, too, um, that's something that whenever we talk about ordinance, is one of the first conversations that we have, is what is our legal authority here? Um, with the tree ordinance, that's not something I'm super familiar on, I would, regardless of what we do, I'm going to get an opinion from legal, what our legal authority is here. Because just because other communities are doing it, doesn't mean there's great legal authority either, a lot of communities do spot something, not great legal authority to do spot something.
When you get referred to some, uh, enforcement, uh, not legislation, but litigation, uh, at the bottom, so that may be germane to this.
I mean, you can make, easily, I think you can make the case quite easily that, you know, large trees are public goods, to some extent.
They're on public property?
Nope, and even on their private property.
Or if they're landmarks or something like that, I get that, but I just don't, um.
Can you burn tires on your property?
Not legally.
Yeah, why not? It's your property, do what the hell you want to.
That's, that's the pretense, John, right there.
So, so like the, the, the site here for the Ace Hardware, how could we, how could they build that out without removing those trees? That's what I'm trying to understand, right?
How could they, what?
How could they build that site out like that, without, without moving the trees?
I, I think there is a, some complication there, even if you say, you're allowed to take everything in the footprint, the building footprint, obviously, right? But that still leaves probably a lot of acreage, right, a lot of land, that then, in a large site, becomes quite a complicated process to, to, to start identifying which trees you can take out and which trees you can't. So if you had a general rule about there are certain species of trees, like, uh, hard, hardwood trees that you would like, over a certain dynamic, diameter, that might get you even a, a better filter, right? Everything else, like softwoods and everything else, you just get rid of, any small trees you can get rid of, and so maybe if that gets you down to a, a manageable place where you can have someone actually walk through and say, okay, of those trees that are hardwood of a certain diameter, we'd like you to keep this one, and this one, and this one, something like that.
And still build their site out.
Well, the, so, i- i- if it's not on the footprint, right, I'm, I'm assuming that there's some discretion, to me.
Now you're telling me I have to, um.
Keep some trees.
Yeah, and have an added cost of maintenance, I'm, I'm not saying.
No, I know, I know, I know.
I'm just posing other, um, ideas.
I mean, the, the, I, I understand the concern for sure, but the other end of it is that I should be allowed to do anything with my land, and if I need to reduce my costs, because it's easier just to clear cut, right, just wipe it clean, totally clean.
Okay, I'm not good at all, man.
Yeah, exactly, scrub it. That, to me, is the extreme in the other way, right? That's what we're trying to avoid, and whether, you know, how far in the middle, that's kind of what we're talking about, to me, is that there's an extreme of just, yeah, you can do everything, just clear it, right? Totally. The other is that we're going through tree by tree, and that's the other extreme. I think there's someplace in the middle there, I don't know how to get there, but I, I totally agree that there's problems on both ends.
I'm just trying to understand, because if I have a site that's bare and I plant trees on it, it was bare before I started, so that site that they built the Ace Hardware store on, there was a few big trees, but most of them trees were just overgrowth that grew up there from when the site was stripped the very first time.
Right, so it wouldn't be a problem, probably.
Most of them trees were, were, yeah. So I just didn't understand how, what, how I could tell them not to do that when all, all them trees are basically, I mean, I guess you're going to not identifying them, but still, and so.
But you need some sort of filter, I think.
Yeah, well, you know, I guess what you need to understand is that the whole pretense behind an ordinance such as this is to save trees, basically, if at all possible, because we, as human beings, breathe air, and air is, you know.
Can't we require them to just put trees down?
Well, that's, that's in that ordinance right there.
So some ordinances do, do that, and then more holistic ordinance, they, they go into more of a tree replacement program.
Oh, and that.
Meridian Township has something like.
But the value of trees is not just air either, right, the public value.
Well, exa- I mean, it.
That's an example, but that, that, that would not speak to the idea, what's the value of a mature tree? Because actually, you know, fast-growing small trees, you know, process more, uh, air than old, old growth does, right? So, but that's why it would be dangerous to say, that's the only reason that we're having you save trees, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, three not three might take fifty years to get six inches of rock.
Yep.
So with invar- any kind of environmental, right, because, I mean, I come out of the development, that's kind of like my bread and butter, right? And so, developers, um, and, and planning, we call it the dark side of planning, which most of my friends in planning are on the dark side.
You like pavement or what?
I happen to see myself as being on the light side, I guess, but, um, so, developers hate any kind of environmental ordinance, and.
Because it increases costs.
To your point, Dan, there's a spectrum, right?
Mm-hmm.
What's the incentive from the free market, right? The free market is to bring the lowest cost private, product possible to the market with the highest return on investment. And then, on the public sector, on the other end of the spectrum, um, the standard is to get the most for the public good possible at any dollar amount expense to the private sector, it doesn't matter, right, that's the most extreme end of the spectrum. And so, for example, we sit on a lot of these development classes, the state of California is usually talked about quite a bit, they're a large state, they're young, they, um, be the world's fifth largest economy, um, a lot of planning doctoring comes out of California, um. They talk about some wild stuff, I mean, they have review boards, and aesthetical review boards, most projects, a single-family home in California, from submittal from a home builder to the time a building permit is granted, on average, is a nine-month review process. In that township, it's an average of three weeks review process, so we're quite a ways from that. But that stems from the fact that California and most local municipalities there have a series of boards, even for single-family homes, that they have this stuff go through now. They're having a lot of problems right now, they're having a housing supply problem, they're having a business flight problem, they're having a wealth, uh, a wealth individual fleeing the state problem there. So, to your point, Dan, those are, that's the spectrum, there's a lot of room in the middle, um, as it relates specifically to trees, I guess, the goal is to try to, the goal for me, I guess, is, as we move forward in this process, if this is something that the planning commission wants us to entertain, I'm not sure if you guys want to know if it is or isn't, we'll try to find that middle the best way we can.
Yep. I mean, just going back to that, you know, the, sort of the filter, I, I think if you had like a diameter size hardwood native tree, that covers a lot of ground for trees that you'd want to keep.
Six is pretty small, though.
What's that?
Six is pretty small.
I think six is str- small, too.
Yeah, it's a pretty small tree.
So what would, what would something like this do for that site that we're talking about, Hopkalo? Can, can you kind of maybe help me wrap my brain around it? So I own that lot, and I want to build out a lot and a half, um, I need space, I want to build the house, if you're going to get the money.
We're not gonna, we're not going to stop you from building the house you want to build.
Okay.
Um, because there's lot coverage things anyway, right? So you can build the footprint, and obviously you got to remove the trees to build the footprint of the house and the house where it sits, right?
Okay.
And then we say, whatever that filter is, okay, but now we want an inventory of all hardwood tree, native hardwood trees over D V H of ten inches, or whatever it is, twelve inches, whatever it is, right? We want you to identify those, if there's nothing there, you can clear cut it. If there are a few, then tell us what they, where they are, and then we can work with you to kind of reasonably save those trees that we think, you know, uh, would sort of not add excessive cost to the build, essentially, I think something like that, right?
See, this, this is where the place, you just talked about, they cleared the underbrush, they didn't really cut trees. Oh, yeah, they did, they cut trees too, didn't they? Well, they, they cleared all the undercr- underbrush through here.
Right.
The house that burned was right here.
Okay.
Apparently, they bought this lot, too, now they turned the house kind of this way, and it takes maybe years, but they clear cut every tree from here to the road, everything's gone.
Right.
There's no reason for them to do that, because they probably had seventy-five feet near to the house, near to that lot, they could have left some trees in there.
Unless they didn't want to leave, so like in my daughter's neighborhood.
Well, they didn't want to leave, yeah, but, but the thing is, from a envi- environmental standpoint, those trees were important. And I guess if they clear cut that entire area in there to build, then all of a sudden you're going from a, a tree area to a farmer's field, to build houses in there.
Yeah, because that's what it's like in my daughter's neighborhood, so she, she lives in a subdivision, and, uh, well, it's not subdivision, anyways, uh, I don't know what the cops say.
Yeah.
And, uh, her house sits in between two yards that are immaculately beautiful. She can't get her yard that way because she has all the oak trees, all the growth is still there, everyone else around her is, uh, not a tree. So I understand the value of it, and, and I love the value of it, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, how come you can tell me I have to do that?
It's harder, I think, in a residential area than it is for commercial development. For commercial development, you got a big building, then they get property around it, then I think you can save some big trees. And, and you might have to modify the foot, footprint of your building, or move it a little bit, to save this big tree we want to save.
I mean, I, I don't, yeah, so I don't even know if that we, if we're talking about individual homeowners or mainly sort of residential construction projects.
A good example would be.
Or commercial, for that reason, too, maybe.
Would be the place into a township on, on Clark Road, where I don't think.
Oh, where I, that's a John's place.
Yeah, yeah, Ice Place, yeah, they clear cut that whole thing two years ago, they had not done a thing.
Three years ago.
And it's bare earth.
It was just bare dirt, oh, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't even plant a cover crop on it.
No, nothing.
Yeah, and it's, and it's eroding unbelievably, and I think that's, that's the spirit of this ordinance, is to prevent something like that in our townships.
So, okay, so two things were new, yes, one, if we wanted to prevent that from happening with commercial developments, even with my, like, developer bias, I could see there being value in that, right? And I think that's an easier case to make to people, because now you're not, homeowners are always difficult to regulate homeowners, because people get quite testy and.
And I thought that's what we were talking about, because you called this commercial clear cutting.
Yeah, and in America, we have a long, same tradition of property rights, which is great, obviously, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I want to go down in how old America is, but, so, but anyways, um, so, the second thing, though, that I, I guess I want to say is, whatever we come up with, I, I always urge everyone to think about the practicality of said ordinance, because the more granular we get with this, the more difficult enforcement becomes, the more simple the ordinances, the more clear-cut the processes, the more realistically it's going to be implemented, um, because, again, we don't have a ton of staff capacity, everyone is very busy, there's, we are not going to be able to, uh, hire an arborist to go out and be checked, doing spot checks, and if we do want to hire an arborist to go out and do spot checks, then that fee structure needs to be built into the ordinance, and it needs to be talked about at the board level, about how that would work.
Yep. I wonder if you, I mean, I wonder if you have county or state help on something like this, right, because.
Again, again, that's total possibility, but that needs to be.
Because they have, they have an interest in this very question, right? They have a strong interest, and, you know, groups like the D N R want to engage with local communities more than they're doing, it's just that we don't, we never ask them to. You know, they may have a staff arborist that they'll gladly sort of loan out, not, not, we don't even have to pay maybe, right? So that, that would be something to look into.
Okay. And should we also build something into future, so let's say, uh, I got to save this tree, it's a hundred and fifty years old, it might look wonderful on the outside, but the arborist would say, that's rotten, just like my soul, looks nice outside, but inside, rotten.
Well, like the ones we cut down by the cemetery, the other.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, but in the future, so let's say that we save some trees on that lot there, and he wants five years down the road, you know, this, this tree's just been on my roof, I can't take it no more, is that something I have to come back in and say, I want to remove that tree?
Because then you're a private property owner, I assume, you're a private property owner.
Oh, I see, but if it was a business.
I'm taking commercial clear cutting to be a developer is developing a site, or maybe a business is developing a site.
So if it changed, I'm just, I'm just.
Or commercial residential.
Commercial residential, yeah.
So, so if something, if the site changed, then they, that would be part of the special use permit, so like if the.
I, I don't think so, I mean, I, I think that.
What do we?
Maintenance, maintenance of a property because of, you know.
Okay.
I, I, I think you'd not have to come back for a permit.
I'm getting, I'm getting a sense of where you guys are going, so I have here, one more question to help me, because, you know, we have to do this work. So there was kind of two options in the presentation tonight, the first one was, uh, regulating through the means of zoning, and the second two were regulating through the means of a regulatory ordinance. What do you guys think about these two options, which one you think is better for those in time?
I don't like either of them.
What I was thinking, regarding to commercial versus residential, what if, what if you're a private landowner, you have a twenty-acre parcel, and you, and you want to sell the lumber? So, uh, and this is, this has happened in my family, of.
Yeah.
Some lumber companies will go up and give you ten thousand dollars for X amount of, and they'll just go in and cut everything.
But then they started straightening me out, they, this is for commercial, not for residential.
Okay, so that's, what would that be, though, what would be the difference?
You're, you're, you're a private individual contracting with the company to remove trees, that, that doesn't cut, I don't think it's counted under commercial clear cutting.
So what I'm saying is that, that that, in and, in and of itself, would constitute clear cutting?
It would.
So what's the difference?
In, in my, in my experience, too, uh, with that, because I, I, I know some property owners that do that quite a bit, they usually don't. In, in my experience, and maybe yours is different, they usually don't clear cut, they usually come in and they get some white trees.
Well, yeah, they get the good ones.
Yeah, they get the good ones, but they usually don't do a bit of clear cut.
But they leave a mess behind.
Yeah, is there a way, if, if we're going to do an ordinance, is there a way we could like put a reward for cottonwood trees to be cut down?
I've got a couple in our neighborhood, it'd be good hearing that.
So I think you're right, Miles, with the sentiment of what you're hearing here.
What, what, talking about residential, too, is that, there, there may be some trees in township that are on residential property that we're going to save,
Yeah.
just because of the size of the tree or whatever, there's one, can you slide that to the other end of this? Okay, that, that house right here is there, there's now a house right here also.
Yes.
There's that corner lot there, there's a couple of really big trees on this lot, it would be nice to save.
It just, it beautifies the.
I mean, that's where it gets difficult.
Yeah, I would, I would say that we are making significant progress if we just did the commercial clear cutting, and by diving into private individuals, residents having to get a permit to cut down a big tree in the yard, I think we're creating many more headaches.
You're opening up a can of worms.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand the need, and I would, I argue that it is important to save those trees, but baby steps.
You also got to think, too, and we talk about this a lot internally, uh, there's a saying in planning that planning is politics, and politics is planning. Whatever comes out of the planning mission has to go to people that get elected. You got to think about what their willingness is to pass that.
Yeah.
There's no point in doing all this work if you think you're unable to give an ordinance, says, unable for an elected official to get behind it.
Yeah, so I, I would say we start with the commercial, see where that goes, and then, many, many, many years down the road, if we think that works, we could do something else, but I'd be really leery to do, to, to regulate private individuals.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's only going to be, most, most of the time, it's only going to be in those districts that that occurs anyways.
The developments, yes, right.
Is in our development districts.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you all for sharing me.
All right, Miles, back to you, have you got a report for us?
Not this one.
Okay. All right, so, uh, final opportunity for public comment, would anyone like to address the planning commission? Please.
My name is Joan Maston, and I live at one side three four four Clubport Drive, and I always love to hear you guys grab the issues. I think the tree thing is really interesting, and one of the things, I'm glad you started with the commercial, so we didn't have time to think about the other problems, but one of the things I think would be really helpful is that if the city had a promotion about being a city of conservation, wanting to help people, when they have issues like which tree to save, or what can I do with this tree, or I'm developing my property, who do I go to for advice? And I was, when you said the D N R, I wondered if David had any kind of program we could hook into and advertise out to the community, so that people are conscious. I would also love to see every new parking facility, you know, where they, um, want to be hardware, have those little islands with trees in them, again, for shade, to dissipate the heat that's generated by all the concrete. So those are the things I think might help us make people aware that that tree they're about to cut down, that's been on there for, who knows, how many years, um, maybe I should talk to an expert. Um, maybe I should talk to an expert for, if they have that knowledge, there are experts out there that I have access to. Whatever agency in the city is. I know, we live on a tree block and every time I want to cut down a tree, my husband says, no. And, uh, there's a, the best tree in our lot is leaning against towards our house like this. And every year we cut branches off the side of this leaning, hoping that it won't, uh, weigh anymore. So I just think I'd love to have help myself when I'm making decisions about, okay, maybe I'll be helped to let that tree remain natural. So that was my first comment. Um, we missed you guys, I just wanted to let you know that we're not the ones that took it anymore. But I got COVID and I gave it to Gary, he got COVID. Then I got COVID visa. So we were out for a whole month.
I was gone when you were gone.
So, uh, we're, we're glad to be back here and that you are working so hard to do. Um, I did raise my hand when you were discussing and then we passed that, uh, with the ordinance, whatever you were voting on. Only because I just know where something like, um, somebody made a comment, if you may, if actually something outside a home, then it was sold from the home, if that wasn't allowed or if that was- But I wonder how the Tupperware lady did it to that? She's selling things she doesn't make, but she has Home Party or the Mary Kay lady, who's actually a representative of a large company, but she's her own little business, she's her own client.
Yep. Those are interesting.
So that, I just, I was just going to ask that.
Those are interesting examples.
Yep.
I don't have a good answer for you, actually, so I don't know.
I, well, if, if I could, most of those, of those two examples, in fact, those products, when an individual purchases those products from that, we'll say that homeowner, she doesn't usually get all that product in in a big truck and then disseminate it out of her private residence. It's usually sent right to that individual.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, and I don't know the mechanism for like Mary Kay companies that are-
I always think they'd be a home occupation.
Same fact, same.
Right.
They're more of a home business.
But they do have party, but they do have some resources for people to look at, so.
The other thing that-
I mean, I'm a girl of the fifties, so.
The other thing that Miles, the other thing that Miles mentioned is that they may not, um, meet four of the, four of the eight criteria and so they would be actually designated as a home occupation instead of a home business.
I wondered about that.
Yeah, yeah.
That was just a question.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so that was that. And then, um, well, I love you talking about the sidewalk. I'm a person who loves to walk in the street, as you know, and I probably would closer to the garden. Um, and it gives you a, rather than being responsible for hiding sidewalks, who, one, I didn't even know, I didn't know what I was, like, um, responsible for the sidewalk. Who was responsible for the same tree tree that was planted fifty years before? A maple whose very superficial roots were up ending on sidewalks? Are the street trees also the homeowners?
Is that in East Lansing?
You know, that was that.
Yeah, if, if it's on that property, it's someone more responsible.
Even if it's in the right way?
Even if it's in the right way, if it's in the right way, there's some additional, uh, ability for the road commission and any utility, I don't think that holds easement in that right away to do work to that tree. They have that right. But at the end of the day, it's homeowner's responsibility.
But they're planted by the city government.
Were they planted by the city of York? I mean, they might, if this is in East Lansing?
No, they're old trees, that's why they live the sidewalk.
What municipality?
East Lansing.
East Lansing.
Oh, then East Lansing might have the different implications. I'm speaking about that.
But here, here-
Here in Bath, it would be the property owner's responsibility.
That was just a question. Well, I think that, those were just things that came to mind, so I thought I'd ask one here. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, yeah.
Watch your step.
Where you how, Tim Red Trail? I haven't heard it. Thank you, because you were asking some of the questions that I asked, so I appreciate it. Somebody else is taking notes. Somebody's here for Miles or for Dan, depending on who's got it. The cost to the homeowner or the, when you have a home-based registration, what does it cost to act here?
Sorry.
What's the fee for a home-based business?
Home-based business?
Um, I mean, it does depend, but with the new fee structure that we have, an application would cost about a hundred dollars on average.
Do you know how many, you can ask the township?
How many, an inventory of businesses, no.
Oh, we don't know. So this is a volunteer type of thing?
Yeah, or complaint driven. Or complaint driven, if somebody was to complain about some business activity.
If I like you, I'm not going to complain.
Yeah.
And even though they're a violation, I like you, so I'm not going to complain. Okay. But just in some areas, you know, if it's a complaint driven, um, that's always a question. If you all like somebody, you know, complaining even though they're a violation.
So much of our ordinance is complaint driven, right? So-
Most of our ordinance is complaint driven.
Exactly, so there's, there's nothing new here, I guess, is what I'm suggesting.
Oh, God, no, it's not new.
Right.
Any scratch.
Right.
It's just, right, but it's not new. Okay. Mike, which board members did you talk to about sidewalks? When you mentioned that, which board members did you talk to?
Uh, I was actually, I reviewed the board's video and then, um, so I was watching it live. I heard that they gave us direction to do that and then the superintendent directed me to get this on the planning division's, uh, list of tasks. So on our workover the year. And it was stated at the board, I think, that this fee expanded, so I thought we should move quick.
Yeah, we did, yeah, I mean, kind of, okay. All right. So there was no board member in particular that you talked to, it's only?
No, it's all the mean and then superintendent.
That's it. Okay, thank you. That is really helpful. Um, in that meeting that you were listening to, did they give a dollar amount for sidewalks? Is there a, or is it just an overall blanket?
For the clean slate program?
Is that what you're calling it?
What do you mean?
I don't think any-
Was there any place where we talked about sidewalks, do these guys know this? We talked about the sidewalks. Was there any funding for these sidewalks that we're talking about?
Well, the safe routes to school funding is already allotted and that project will come in 2024 and that covers some of the, uh, worst areas of the downtown, uh, area. And then I think it was mentioned at the board meeting that Arco Farms could come, but no dollar amount was discussed.
Because we haven't done the assessment, right? So we don't know what the cost might be, we don't know, we don't know the state of the sidewalk quite yet.
Okay. No, that's- Explain to me again the clean slate. I, that was the first time I heard that term.
Danny, what?
Yeah, so the clean slate's just the idea that, you know, for years, although we've had the ordinance on the books, that the property owner's responsible for the sidewalks, we haven't enforced it. We haven't enforced it. And so, uh, it might seem unfair that suddenly now we're just saying, okay, uh, the ordinance has always been there, but now we're actually going to, we're going to enforce it. So the clean slate's, the idea is that we're going to try to bring all sidewalks up to, uh, a standard, right? So that they're good, so that now sort of the, the clock starts, right? And so we can now say, yes, the ordinance, we're probably going to revise that ordinance, but still, the ordinance that the property owner has to maintain them will now go into effect because now you all should be, you know, your sidewalk should be good. But just be forewarned that now it is your obligation to take care of them and to maintain them.
The purpose is to make sure the sidewalks are within the two ordinance or eighty compliance.
Right, right.
And then the, the homeowners, um, but-
Right, and it's always been the case, but to be fair, we want to make sure that all sidewalks are in good condition and now we say, now we're going to have you actually, you're, you're responsible for doing that. George, did you have a comment to make?
I was just going to say, because of safe routes to school and most of the subdivisions being, um, in good, good state already, that gives us a good slate, so most of it will already be done under that umbrella.
Right, so-
Except for the eighty eight compliance came in years later, so it's not, unless all of, unless the development's really good.
The safe routes to school will address a lot of that.
Oh, no question. Okay. No, that helps because that clean slate issue is not something that I've heard before, so I wanted to make sure I had that. All right, we talked about the district. Yeah, so, yeah, we talked about the district.
Mm-hmm.
In a sense, from, from my perspective, you know, the, I'm an open north end, so I don't even have that issue.
Yep, me too.
No, so what else? So we're making kind of decisions of what happens. When you're talking about a district, I don't know what your property tax is for. I, I have a hard time understanding the district when in fact you pay property tax. So what do your property tax go for if it's not for sidewalks? Why would you have a district if somebody would have to pay extra because they have sidewalks?
Right, correct.
No, I understand, they've, they got that, they understood the lighting thing, you know that. But I didn't understand the, the clean slate along with the district. What was your thought?
Well, the clean slate is going to bring up everybody's sidewalk up to an acceptable standard. And all I was suggesting was that if the property owners wanted a sidewalk district and they wanted to pay an annual fee into the district, that the district then could maintain the sidewalks. And as far as I'm concerned, snow plowing would be part of that option because otherwise you're enforcing this twenty-four hour limit and there's going to be people that are going to be sick, there's going to be people on vacation, there's going to be people that are not able to maintain their snow plowing on their sidewalk. And we already have a lot of township property that's got sidewalk on it.
So if I'm in a district, then I pay a vendor for coming in and taking care of it or I pay the township?
You'd pay to a fund that would be administered by the township. The township could then contract with a vendor to supply snow plowing or supply, maintain the sidewalk or replace sidewalks as needed, but there'd be a fund that would be administered by the township. Just like we do the lighting district.
So that's a, excuse my terminology, but that's a penalty that I wouldn't have because I don't have sidewalks.
It's not a penalty, it's an expense.
You wouldn't pay into it because you're not in the district?
That's correct. No, that's what I, that's what I guess, I didn't understand my property tax. So it's in addition to, like, someone who has lights on Peacock Road or something. They have all these lights that come down there.
Right.
They have to pay a certain dollar amount to the township for having the lights.
Correct, that's correct.
So the suggestion with district sidewalk would be, if I'm an owner and I have sidewalk, I would pay in addition to my property tax, that kind of pay. Nope, that's what I'm trying to, trying to figure it out.
Yep.
And when you talked about the trees, I thought that was a fascinating discussion, you guys really screwed up. But what I didn't understand was you do landscaping, you mandate that commercial people have to have landscaping. Why don't you do the same, same with trees? I don't understand the tree.
We have, we have a landscaping plan they have to have, but that's, that's basically site development. It's not site preparation. No, uh, so-
Recreation.
So there are trees on the site, right now we don't have anything that says that they can't just mow down every tree on the site. They still might have to come back and say, they need, they have to have a landscaping plan with so many trees, but there might be a different interest to keep some of those trees in the process of developing the site.
So the question that we have is what should be, should be landscaping? The ordinance can be provided by, what else I, that's all.
The, the ordinance that we're talking about would be probably a regulatory ordinance that would, would try to conserve existing trees, uh, during the development process. And then we would still have a landscape, what?
The landscaping, one example.
I think they're separate, you have to think of them as separate. I mean, in, in total, we're talking about, you know, the trees and vegetation on the site, but part of that is at the front end prior to development. And the landscaping part of the site plan is on essentially the back end, right? So after the site is developed, you know, you've got to plant so many trees and so many locations and certain types, right? So, but together, it, it's the total vegetation on the, on the site, but it's before and after kind of the actual construction. George?
So the after part is like maybe to, uh, use as screening or stuffs like that? Maybe buy lights from going into the neighbor's house or keep the noise down that, you know, cars can go through or, you know. So that's what the landscaping plan is? After the site, when the site's built, that's, that's built into the plan.
It has to be done around the footprint, then you have, what's?
The tree prior is, they might have to change their plans a little bit to save a tree.
The difference is, right, I mean, I think the difference is that if you had no, if we're, the, the ordinance that we're talking about, if we didn't, if it didn't exist, which currently doesn't exist, I think it suggests that we'd be totally satisfied with all small trees on any new newly developed site. That's, that's what we currently have, right? You, because no one's going to plant a fifty foot oak tree on a site, right? But maybe we'd like to save the fifty foot oak tree on a site and that's what's going to do it under this proposed ordinance, which you wouldn't ever get or most likely wouldn't get under our current ordinance with just a landscaping plan.
So just in your landscaping plans, you can't dictate to your commercial-
We can.
That you save-
Oh, no.
-trees.
No, because by that-
So that has to fall under an ordinance to say you have to do this-
Exactly.
-under an ordinance, not because the planning commission says you have to do it.
I mean, there might be way, some way to build the landscaping ordinance that, that way, but I think it's probably, I, we're not talking about that, right? We're talking having them sort of separate processes.
Well, yes, but you have to make the decision when a commercial comes in, say with sidewalk, whether they put sidewalk within their commercial area or whether they don't, or whether they landscape around footprint or whether they pay.
And sometimes the, they come to us after they've already cleared the site.
That's, that's the current.
Right, and so by the time we have the conversation about the landscaping plan, they're already gone.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
Because how can you enforce an order for trees when they've already?
Ignorance of the law is no excuse.
I wasn't that long time ago.
There you go. So once it's on the books, we can enforce it.
So you, after, once it's on the books-
What?
You would have fines.
Fines, yeah.
Yep, okay, so there we go, there's a revenue generator. So they've cleared the property, now we're telling them that they can't do that, so that's a revenue-
We're telling them that they-
Kind of the same thing with registering your small businesses. When you register for a hundred bucks, that's a good sized revenue.
It's not a revenue generator, actually, it's more of a deterrent, what you're, you know.
The intent's not to generate revenue. The intent is to save the trees.
I know what the intent is, but the reality of life is not always what the intent is and that's, that's the problem. But I appreciate that comment, really. How could I do this, but thank you for being here.
Thanks, Marie.
Thanks.
Yeah. All right, we are at the, uh, open comments by planning commissioners. No, I, I looked that direction, but it's not, it's not, not even a habit. I'm not expecting to get saved in George.
This, this whole board, I appreciate that, that I can speak openly and, you know, get good feedback. Because a lot of times I, I might be saying something, it's not something I, literally came from me. It might have been brought to my attention by somebody else. And so when I get clarity from like Miles, it clarifies like the, like the, like the drain from the drive, that did not come from me, it came from somebody else. So, uh, it's a, it's a great thing to have open discussion and be able to, I learn every day, every time, but I greatly appreciate your patience with me because sometime I take us off where I, where I shouldn't have taken us, but I'm very thankful to each and every one of them.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Miles and George, for the wonderful work you do every day. And he enjoys it.
Other, other comments.
Just a question, is, is East Lansing storage facility actually open now?
Well, that's an interesting question.
I don't think so.
Um, there was a C of O issue for one of their buildings. And sometimes there is a, uh, C of O for the overall site that's not been issued and low occupancy.
Yeah, but what was it, excuse me, that you-
C of O, certification of occupancy.
Oh.
Sometimes, you know, that's the problem with, when you're a smaller township and you have to subcontract some of your work to different companies, like our township engineer's trying to new off, our legal counsel's not in-house, our building department is AGS. And, um- And the voting department on that, I'm not got, if I have a problem, I'll own it a hundred percent when it's my fault. They didn't talk to us, and C O B O got issued, and, uh, steps have been taken to, uh.
Retract it?
Revoke it? No, uh, make sure that that doesn't happen, and then put conditions on, like, right now, they, they requested C O B O for building A, so that's the brick building at the top, that's the climate-controlled storage, that's their money maker, really. They wanted to get C O B O for that last weekend, and we said, no way. So, because. Well, cause the site's not ready.
Oh, it's the water issue still.
Even advertising, very heavily.
I know, I got some in the mail today.
Oh, I did, I got some last week.
Yeah, and, and that's because of the drainage issue?
Yeah, primarily the drainage issue, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
And we've talked, we've talked to them quite a bit about the drainage issue. I was out there with John Morrison, um, last week, twice, once, with talking to the Damassian folks, I guess, just so you guys know. John Morrison, just the words out of his mouth to reassure you guys that we're on it, um, he said, I have a relationship with the property owner next to you guys. I don't care at all about you guys getting people in this structure. Our relationship and our duty to adjacent property owners will always supersede whatever your timeline is here. So, we're not super happy with them right now, um, but we're holding them accountable. We're not gonna get C O B O for another building, which there's seven more that they'd like to get C O B O for, they don't do, but. Now, they can easily do their part, they can easily get this done, like they're gonna have to do.
Unless they go exclusively wet storage of watercraft or something.
Well, and that's, and that's what we were, we kinda said, I, I talked to the Damassian guys, and I was like, hey, just so you know, again, the government isn't here to protect you from shooting yourself in the foot, or you're protecting from shooting somebody else in the foot.
Yeah, right.
So we will stop you from shooting somebody else, but if you take the C O B O that was probably mistakenly given to, and you put people's stuff in that building, good luck.
Yeah, yeah.
So is there a, there's a relatively simple remediation for that, where they need to put drainage in those?
Yeah, oh, there, there's so many ways.
We talked about it, how the buildings are.
John Morrison, and I think some of you guys have seen those emails, has given them, he's very good.
Yeah.
Given them a laundry list of ideas of how they can maybe.
Other comments? Okay, thanks, everyone, so if there are no objections, we can adjourn, or would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
No objections.
No objection, all right, we're adjourned, thanks, everyone, for attending tonight, and your feedback.